This April 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Navy Elementary School Strings, under the direction of Robert Salzberg and Tanya Stanley. Agenda item 2.02, Announcements. Mr. McDaniel submitted a written request to attend tonight's meeting virtually due to personal reasons as he has childcare conflict. He's located in Fairfax, Virginia. All those in favor of Mr. McDaniel's request? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismar Heiser, and myself. That is unanimous for board members present. Can Mr. McDaniel test his microphone and camera?
I'm here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dunn submitted a written request to attend tonight's meeting virtually due to medical reasons. He is located in Mountain Vernon, Virginia. All those in favor of Mr. Dunn's approving Mr. Dunn's request? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. That is unanimous for board members present. Mr. Dunn, will you test your microphone and camera?
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to review a copy of the meeting agenda, please see the back of the auditorium. To obtain copies of any items or supporting materials being presented tonight, please reference the QR code on the agenda or visit fcps.edu/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on YouTube and our website at fcps.edu/livestream. Tonight's meeting is also being broadcast in Spanish on YouTube at youtube.com-atfcpsnespanol. Agenda item 2.03, Arab American Heritage Proclamation. I call on Mr. Moon for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for your indulgence a little bit, let me get to that. Whereas April is a time to celebrate Arab-American heritage and culture, pay tribute to the contributions of Arab-Americans and Arabic-speaking Americans. This year's theme, Arab-American Heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, reflection the community's legacy, while highlighting the next generation of leaders making strides in business, government, education, science, and the arts. And whereas nearly 4 million Americans trace their roots to an Arab country, Arab-Americans hail from 22 Arab nations and are diverse ethnically, religiously, politically, and artistically. And whereas, for centuries, Arab-Americans have made valuable contributions to every aspect of American society: in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and invented many groundbreaking innovations to include television transmission and LCD screens, wafer cone, emotion recognition technology, the iPod and the iPhone, surgical developments including the concept behind coronary bypass surgery, and internet security advances such as the Digital Signature Standard, DSS. And whereas, since migrating to America, people of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples as model citizens and public servants. And Arab-Americans have also enriched our society by sharing the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, two notable Arab-Americans have influenced millions of people around the globe. Khalil Gibran was a writer, poet, and visual artist. He immigrated to the United States in 1895 from Ottoman-ruled Mount Lebanon, Burasarifet, now Lebanon. His best-known work is the 1923 book, The Prophet. It has become one of the best-selling books of all time and has been translated into more than 100 languages. Fairfax County Public Schools alumna Hora Karpie is of Egyptian descent. She is a successful broadcaster journalist and was a TV host of Dayline NBC and The Today Show. She attended Forhun Middle School, then known as Stephen Foster Middle School, and graduated from both Forhun High School and Virginia Tech. And whereas, the celebration of Arab-American ancestry and cultural heritage educates our fellow Americans and counters bias, misconceptions, harmful stereotyping, and shared abuses by other ethnic groups. And Arab-American Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the great pride and vibrancy of the over 100,000 Arab-Americans in Virginia, whose abilities and contributions strengthen Virginia's economy, diverse culture, and communities. And whereas, Fairfax County Public Schools believes in fostering an inclusive community that empowers all students and families, Arab-American Heritage Month presents an opportunity to explore and appreciate the diversity that strengthens our community. Through classroom activities and educational programs, we aim to enrich our students' understanding and appreciation of Arab-American heritage. Now therefore, PU resolved that the Fairfax County School Board hereby proclaims April as Arab-American Heritage Month and officially recognize the contributions Arab-Americans have made to our society. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of Arab-Americans, and encourage participation in educational events honoring their contributions. So I move.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Seismar Heiser. All those in favor of the proclamation? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Mr. Dunn and Mr. McDaniel, will you verbalize your...I see your hands now. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Dunn, and myself. That is unanimous. The proclamation passes. Congratulations. Agenda item 2 point...yes, applause is in order. Agenda item 2.04, Month of the Military Child Proclamation. I call on Ms. Marin for the proclamation.
Whereas April is the month of the military child, this designation was established by former U.S. Secretary of Defense Casper Weinberger in 1986 to acknowledge and honor our youngest military heroes and the significant role they play in our communities. And whereas, the 2025 theme for the month of the military child is "Celebrating Military Child and Youth: Building Stronger Character and Relationships." Military youth show bravery, adaptability, and resiliency through frequently changing family environments. And whereas Virginia is home to over 77,000 military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in the nation, Fairfax County Public Schools proudly supports around 13,500 military-connected youth and their families. And whereas our military-connected students bring a wealth of life experiences to our schools, military families relocate frequently, leading their children to change schools and support networks with each move. These students know firsthand what it feels like to be the new kid and know how a welcoming attitude can help every new student. And whereas military-connected children overcome many challenges and have unique experiences as a result of their parents' assignments at duty stations around the world. And whereas FCPS is honored to participate in the Purple Star Designation Program, the 96 FCPS Purple Star Schools are recognized by the Virginia Department of Education and Virginia Council on Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children for actively supporting military-connected students and their families. And we remain dedicated to ensuring all schools earn the Purple Star Designation by the 26-27 school year. And whereas on April 9, FCPS celebrated Purple Up Day, purple symbolizes all branches of the military as a combination of Army Green, Marine Corps Red, Coast Guard, Navy, Air Force, and Space Force Blue. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board celebrates April as the month of the military child in recognition of military-connected students for their heroism, character, sacrifices, and continued resilience. This month provides a powerful opportunity to raise awareness and build support for these children. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends our appreciation for the service of all children for military families and encourage everyone to wear purple throughout the month to celebrate our military-connected students and families.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Anderson. All right. All those in favor of the proclamation? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Dunn, and myself. That is unanimous for board members present. Congratulations. The proclamation passes. I would like to welcome...one second. Yes. Deputy...welcome Deputy to the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander, Mr. Sean C. LeHane, and all those here in support of the Month of the Military Child Proclamation to please
I would like to welcome all those here in support of the Arab-American Heritage Month
Agenda item 2.05, National Board Certified Teachers' Recognition. Good evening and welcome, leadership teams, honorees, and guests. We are pleased to recognize those Fairfax County Public Schools educators who have earned or renewed National Board Certification for the 25-26 school year. It is my great honor on behalf of the Fairfax County School Board to recognize our National Board Certified teachers for their dedication and contributions to the education of our students. And now, I would like to introduce the Division Superintendent, Dr. Michelle Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Frisch. Good evening, and I would like to congratulate each of you on achieving or renewing your National Board Certification. National Board Certification is a rigorous and prestigious achievement, and we are proud to be here to honor your commitment to excellence as educators. To you, our 2025 honorees, you're part of a very elite group of education professionals who can say that they have achieved National Board Certification. Over the last 24 years, over 500 teachers in Fairfax County have earned National Board Certification. As classroom teachers, you are 23 of the 222 currently teaching in classrooms and serving in leadership positions across Fairfax County. National Board Certification embodies everything we hope to see in our teachers. This group of educators has demonstrated their commitment to high-quality instruction, equity, family engagement, collaboration, and self-reflection on a national level. Thank you for sharing your gifts with the students, staff, and families of Fairfax County Public Schools. And now, I would like to welcome one of our instructors from the National Board Certification Course, Viza Alom, to read the names of our honorees and congratulations again. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Oh, no, good morning. Good evening. Still like in my day zone, I guess. At this time, we will recognize teachers who have achieved National Board Certification. We invite you to use the QR code to access the digital program. I think it's going to come up there. The digital program for more information about each of our honorees. Honorees, when your name is called, please stand and remain standing until all honorees are called. Melissa Johnson, Lake Braddock Secondary School. Patrick Noel, Colvin Run Elementary School. Additionally, we would like to honor the following individuals who are being recognized for achieving their National Board Certification but were unable to come this evening. And they are Heather Hall from Westgate Elementary School. Kristen Barsfeld, Terra Center Elementary School. Hannah Brown, Bailey's Elementary School. Leanna Clark, Bailey's Upper Elementary School. Carol Dahlmet, Madison High School. Rachel Wan Elmandorf, Holmes Middle School. Thank you all. Please join me in recognizing once again the accomplishment of all of the new National Board Certified teachers. Congratulations and a big applause. Please be seated. The following National Board Certified teachers have renewed their certificates. Honorees, when your name is called, please stand to be recognized and remain standing until the honorees are called. Julianne Braden, Laurin Hill Elementary School. Laura Chami, Madison High School. Frances Clark, Keene Mill Elementary School. Heather Jung, Holland Meadows Elementary School. Lauren Kinney, Woodson High School. Rachel Morris, Laurin Hill Elementary School. Aliana Taylor, Hayfield Secondary School. Additionally, we would like to honor the following individuals who are being recognized for renewing their National Board Certification but were unable to attend this evening. Emily Kiefer, Herndon Elementary School. Bethany Layton, Sangster Elementary School. Darren Misak, Lake Braddock Secondary School. Megan Stanley, Cooper Middle School. Julianne Trimble, Bull Run Elementary School. Krista Wagetl, Hayfield Secondary School. Jyotsana Valampati, Madison High School. And Mary Wolf, Herndon High School. Congratulations to the renewed National Board Certified teachers.
At this time, we would like to invite the school board and leadership team to come to the dais for a photo with the new and renewed National Board Certified teachers. We're going to take two photos. The first will be with all honorees, and the second will be with all newly certified
Agenda item...if board members could please return to their seats. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. We welcome all community members who are here and those who have signed up to speak this evening. Additional information about signing up to provide comments at regular school board meetings and public hearings can be found on the school board's website, fcps.edu/schoolboard. During the sign-up process, community members acknowledge they were informed of the school board's expectations for proper decorum when providing comments. These expectations are also available online and with the printed agenda and meeting materials in the back of the room. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of a speaker's remarks. Audience members may not join speakers at the podium and should remain at their seats, including while recording video or taking photos. We are grateful for those who have come to speak to us today, and thank you for your cooperation. School board members will be listening but not responding. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Student speaker number one.
My name is Michael, and I am currently a sixth grader at an FCPS elementary school. I will be attending middle school next year, and I'm excited about the after-school activity opportunities that will be available to my classmates and I if the funding does not get cut for them. Middle school can be a challenging time with increased academic demands and being in a bigger school with more teachers and expectations. Being able to participate in Vow of the Books, or Quiz Bowl, or be a part of the school musical are things that are also so important to the development and mental health of my fellow students. Providing us with additional outlets and opportunities for engagement beyond schoolwork makes us more well-rounded and gives us the chance to develop varied interests and learn new skills that will help us as we continue our schooling and in life. I urge you to consider other school budget funds that could fund the crucial middle school after-school activities program should the item be cut from the county budget. Thank you for your time.
Most middle schools in the school district offer Family and Consumer Sciences as an optional semester-long elective, whereas high schools have classes that fall under the umbrella but are not general and instead focus on specific careers like fashion design or hospitality. Students who didn't take general FACS classes during their short time in middle school or moved to the county later don't have the opportunity to. Not only are these classes not available for high school students to take, even when they are available in middle schools, many people simply don't take them. But the students who don't take FACS are missing out on the benefits of it. While many high school vocational classes prepare students for different careers, they're lacking in a class that prepares them not just for a job but for life in general. The skills taught in FACS classes are wide-ranging. Learning mending techniques can help students recognize quality and avoid fast fashion, whereas learning how to cook and where food comes from can encourage better knowledge of nutrition and understanding of the impacts of farming on the environment, as well as other skills such as childcare and budgeting. Many FCPS students don't see the benefit of these classes and as a result are missing out on an opportunity to be more prepared for adulthood. More high schools should offer general FACS classes to give older students a chance to take a general class rather than one designed with vocational education in mind. Additionally, the idea of making a FACS class a graduation requirement should be considered. There are already a long list of classes needed to graduate, such as core subjects like math and history, and additional classes like personal finance and fine arts electives, as well as others like foreign language being highly encouraged. It wouldn't be much more of a burden to require students to, at some point between seventh and twelfth grade, take a FACS class, and the benefits of learning those life skills would last throughout their lives. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. There are Fairfax County officials. My name is Bibi Kobrah Afzali and I'm a senior at Herndon High School. I'm here to bring attention to a challenge that many students who are new to this country face. From my own experience, I know how difficult it is to start over in a new country. Despite all of that, I have been part of leadership taking Dole enrollment and Avid classes. However, learning a new language, adjusting to a different school system, and keeping up with academic expectations can be very overwhelming. One of the biggest struggles for many students like me is the SOL exams. For those who do not speak English as their first language, these tests can be especially stressful and hard to pass. I know this struggle personally because I have not yet passed the science SOL and I'm trying my best to pass it this year so I can graduate and receive my diploma. Many other students are in the same situations, feeling pressured and anxious because passing these exams is required for graduation. I respectfully ask the county to consider making the process easier for students who are still learning English, whether through extra support, testing options, or other helpful solutions. Giving these students more opportunities would make a big difference. I am writing on behalf of all the students who are new to this country and facing this challenge. I hope you will take this issue seriously and find ways to support us so we can all have a fair chance to succeed. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rayanna Quasi and I am the Outreach Specialist for Turning Point, which is a program of the Fairfax Falls Church Community Services Board, a part of Fairfax County. I am here today to tell you a little bit about our program. We are a program that provides services to Fairfax County residents that are experiencing symptoms of psychosis. So briefly, symptoms of psychosis can include hearing and seeing things that others don't, experiencing unusual behaviors, unusual thoughts. So Turning Point has two different tracks specifically to address this issue in Fairfax County. We have one that is the First Episode Psychosis Track. So specifically, anybody who's experiencing symptoms within the last two years is eligible for this program. And the High Risk Track, which is anybody who's experiencing some general symptoms, broader symptoms, but hasn't been diagnosed yet. So this program is a wonderful program. It provides so many different services like caregiver support, family support, psychotherapy, case management, physical activity, really trying to build resiliency and self-sufficiency in re-engaging our clients back into the community. So we are making an appeal to Fairfax County schools, particularly high schools, if they're noticing any symptoms in their students or even parents, to please make a referral. I can provide that referral email for you after this meeting. And it's just a absolutely wonderful program and we really want to work with schools. So thank you so much and I hope that if you have any questions, please let me know.
Good evening. I speak to you tonight as a 50-year Fairfax County taxpayer, father of three former FCPS students, a Vietnam vet, and retired Voice of America journalist. My topic tonight is the school board's responsibility, in conjunction with FCPS administrators, the staff, school admin, and teachers, to keep students safe and protected. This responsibility is just as important as your responsibility to educate students in the academic disciplines and partnering with parents. Some of the safety issues in question include student drug overdose incidents, human trafficking, sex trafficking, gang activity, normalization/promotion of apparent sexual acts, abortion as a means of birth control, and instances of gender dysphoria. Ironically, gender dysphoria is most likely brought on by topics in the family life education curriculum, or the suggestive survey questions in socio-emotional health, or the health and human growth curriculum. Recently, Governor Youngkin said in Virginia, "Parents have a fundamental right to make decisions on their child's upbringing, care, and education." And include schools notify parents if a minor student expresses gender incongruence or requests school participation in affirming their gender identity. Schools should gain parental consent before implementing any related plans, including counseling, raising a child consistent with their biological sex, including related mental health or medical decisions, is not parental abuse or neglect. This is common sense. Fairfax County Public Schools, however, is one of the 12 school systems in Virginia that have a policy to deceive parents about their own children. I ask you to please recognize that keeping secrets from parents is dangerous, and among other dangers, opens the door to predators. It states, calls parents abusive to raise their...
At the start of his campaign speech, shortly after he was shoved by radicalized would-be assassin Theodore Roosevelt, said, "It is a very natural thing that weak and vicious minds should be inflamed to acts of violence by the kind of awful mendacity and abuse that have been heaped upon me for the last three months by the papers." We need to teach civics. There are few young persons with whom I speak who appreciate our Constitution as mankind's very first governing document to state all men are created equal, or anything remotely similar. They don't recognize our rights come from God, not government, and that our government is created to defend those rights. Fortunately, children aware of those are homeschooled or taught in private schools. We need to teach history, the good and the bad. For example, in order to create a society that liberated Americans from tyranny and create full equality, something grave was put off until a later date. That date was September 1861, the Civil War. And the struggle continues. America is not perfect, but it is great because we confront the struggle. It is great because we treat history honestly and keep discussions open. It is great because we trust in the human spirit, not in government control. History shows us governments that need to control always end badly. Our constitutional public defends flourishing. It is in the defense of our rights so egregiously trespassed against us during COVID. It is in the defense of our free marketplace of ideas and open discussion without reprisal so dishonestly trespassed against our children with compelled speech policies. It is in the peaceful transition of power so desperately fought against by the weak, vicious minds who attempted to kill a presidential candidate, have incited violence against justices, put men in women's sports, et cetera, et cetera. We do indeed need to love and cherish each soul and lift all to their greatness and their potential. It is misguided to teach our children to be racist, to enable their destructive behavior, and to conspire with them against their parents. Misguided. NDEI, NFMLE.
Good evening. I'm here as an FCPS parent, teacher, and PTA president from the Sully and Springfield districts. I'm here to advocate for the after-school programs and the employees who run them. I'm one of many residents who is in favor of the meals tax in conjunction with the real estate tax so we can keep our programs going. I'm asking you be more creative in how to increase our FCPS budget, not tied to the county or state, because they've made it very clear we can't count on them. Where can FCPS save money? Eliminate center AAP schools and require every elementary and middle school to have AAP-endored staff and multiple classrooms, saving $8 million annually on transportation. Pay out PTO to FCPS employees corresponding to the step and salary at rate at which it was accumulated. Allow businesses to sponsor school events, clubs, name fields, auditoriums, staircases, et cetera. My ask tonight, though, is that the board make a written commitment with Dr. Reed, prior to the finalized budget, that you will retain the after-school program educators in their current schools should their programs be eliminated. Dr. Reed was at GBW this week and she said she wanted to do that. Thank you. But wanting to versus a written and binding commitment is different. After-school programs employ 26 highly valued educators and with the threat of eliminating their programs, they've been placed under what feels like a gag order. Barred from using their FCPS emails, discouraged from disseminating information to their school communities about these proposed cuts. They've been forced to rely on us at PTA's to spread the word. Dr. Anderson, Ms. St. John Comning, and Ms. Lady know firsthand from having worked in our schools how vital adults like them are. They do much more than just run after-school clubs. Taking away a safe, trusted adult in tandem with the after-school programs will cause serious damage to the 23,000 students they impact daily. So please, commit to continue contracts for these essential educators regardless of budgetary constraints. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair of School Board and wider community. My proposal tonight is that those of us on opposite sides of these really hot topics sit down together and eat and visit without discussing these hot topics. I have a friend with whom I disagree sharply about many things in the culture war. At this point in time, these topics are too hot for us to talk about. So we visit, and we spend time, and we eat, we read books that we both enjoy. I talk about, at other times, the erasure of trans folk and the trauma and deaths to people in my community. He, at other times, speaks of things that he sees that are equally dire. But we can still sit together and see one another as human. And I think that's what our community has to do. We have to sit down together and rehumanize one another. Otherwise, we'll get nowhere. My friend and I have the luxury of doing this because we're not directly affected by the things that we fear. And I don't want to re-traumatize or blame folks who are directly affected. But we cannot see one another as evil or dishonest. We must see one another as human. In these times... I've really gotten off my speech here. So I'll just say thank you all for listening. If anybody wants to contact me, I'm sure you can Google me and find contact information. Thank you for listening.
Sheila Murad Deher.
Good evening, Dr. Reed, Chairman Fish, and school board members. I teach fourth grade at West Prior Elementary School and I'm here to request your assistance and bring your attention to the fact that FCPS is not honoring teacher-trainee years of full-time teaching experience on the step pay scale. This contradicts FCPS Regulation 4625, which explicitly states, quote, "Full-time teaching in a public school shall be allowed for experience credit," close quotes. Hired in August 2021 to teach K-6 team on an IAPA scale, I was then hired to teach full-time under the Teacher Resident Program, created to fill urgent vacancies in 2022. I was then rehired in 2023 under the rebranded Teacher-Trainee Program. After fulfilling all the coursework requirements last month, HR cited a contract clause that discredits my years of full-time teaching experience and put me on the Step 1 of the pay scale. Teacher-trainees have fulfilled all the responsibilities of a contracted teacher unassisted. Our community trusts that the work of full-time teachers entrusted with their children's education is credible and therefore must be creditable. As a parent of two FCPS graduates, I certainly trusted that all our teachers were being treated equitably. Denying recognition of teacher-trainee's teaching experience sends a message that our years of full-time service and contributions are not valued. If those positions were not marked unfilled or vacant, shouldn't our time be credited? I respectfully request that my full-time teaching experience be recognized in accordance with Regulation 4625, allowing our service to be made whole by fair compensation of the work that we have diligently carried out. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chairman Fish, Vice Chair Anderson, distinguished board members. I'm Robert Drummer. I'm a member of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, the Omicron Kappa Kappa chapter that serves primarily Western Fairfax, Herndon, and Reston, Virginia. I serve as Chair of our Omega STEM Committee, as well as on our Fatherhood and Mentoring Initiative Committee. However, I'm speaking tonight solely on my own behalf in my personal capacity and not in, as an official representative of the organization or any other public or private entity. Over the past three years, I've volunteered with our STEM program. At Langston Hughes Middle School, we sponsor their VEX robotics team. We also sponsor the area drone competition team at Reston Teen Center. And during the course of those three years, I witnessed personally these young people, middle school students, grow and develop, not only in their hard skills, but in their soft social and life skills. Additionally, one of our brothers, Chuck Smith, who's a former math instructor, has volunteered as a tutor at Reston Teen Center for math, as well as volunteered last year at the VIP Summer Camp. In addition to our robotics and STEM programs, we also sponsor awards for the Fairfax County Science Fair, which is a pipeline through the middle school STEM and robotics programs and drone programs. So as you consider the FY '26 budget, particularly the efforts to eliminate the after-school program funding for middle school activities, we beg you to reconsider that as these funds are indispensable in helping these kids, particularly many of them from marginalized
Please play the video testimony submitted by Stephanie Lundquist-Aror.
Good evening. A is for the Aviator, Amelia Earhart. This is how an appropriate public school display celebrating Women's History Month would have begun. Instead, West Springfield High School experienced something entirely different, a divisive and inappropriate display that began with "A is for abortion" accompanied by the image of a cohangar. I could go on here to discuss the other abhorrent posters in the display, which Dr. Reed explicitly classified as "critical thinking," and all 12 of the school board members also supported with their cowardly silence when asked to comment via email. In reality, the display was politically one-sided and undeniably controversial. In the future, students might wish to hang signs in the hallway that cover a variety of themes and issues. I'm all for free speech, which is why I object to your compelled pronouns policy. So let me ask you this: Is it district policy to allow students to hang whatever they would like to in the hallways? If so, please do make that clear. I suppose you wouldn't object to, for example, a display supporting the Second Amendment featuring an image of Lieutenant Governor Winsome Steers, a proud Marine Corps veteran, holding a rifle. Controversial issues distract public schools from their mission, of which you seem to have lost sight. The most recent SOL data reflects poorly on the district. 22% of SCPS students failed reading, 72% failed writing, 24% failed math, 27% failed science, and 59% failed history. FCPS is at the center of yet another national scandal in education because of its poor leadership. You could have acknowledged the divisiveness of the display and removed it immediately, but you didn't. Our tax dollars should not be funding projects and curricula for children that violate many of our principles and religious beliefs. Why is it that whenever faced with an 80/20 issue, you irrationally choose the 20? The way you handle the ABCs-to-me display reflects your biases and willingness to engage in viewpoint discrimination against students who overtly objected to the exhibit. District leadership should set a better example for its students moving forward. Thank you.
Chair Fish, that was our last public speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item 4.01, Student Representative Matters. Ms. Sawant is attending an event with her future university tonight. I will let her break the news. And regretfully could not attend tonight's meeting, so we will skip Student Representative Matters and hear from her next meeting. Agenda item 5.01, Action Item, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on April 10, 2025, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting... matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. Moon, do I have a second? Ms. Seismarheiser, all those in favor? Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Dunn, and myself? And anybody opposed? Abstentions? Mr. McDaniel, the motion carries. Agenda Item 5.02, Action Item, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. I call on Ms. Dixit for a motion.
I move that the School Board authorize us to pretend in legal counsel to negotiate the acquisition of certain real property... real estate property for a public purpose according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all those in favor of the motion? Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Dunn, and myself? All those opposed? Ms. Maron, abstentions? Mr. McDaniel, will the clerk read the vote?
The vote is 8-1-1. The motion carries.
The motion carries. All right. Agenda Item 5.03, Action Item, Financial Year 2025 Third Quarter Budget Review. I call on Mr. McDaniel for a motion.
I move that the School Board approve the FY 2025 Third Quarter Budget Review as detailed in the Agenda Item on Board Docs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just want to echo what I said at the last meeting. This is a fairly routine item. You know, we... the budgeting process is one where there's really just not a lot of wiggle room, and I think if I recall correctly, this represents a .015% variance of the overall budget. And that... and the funding is going into safety, mostly safety and security priorities. So I'm happy to move this forward, and thank you to Lee and her staff, as always, for the hard work you put into the budget.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Ms. Seismarheiser, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, just briefly. I wanted to first start by saying I really thank our budget team, budget staff, as well. This is a very detailed review that we do, you know, every quarter on the budget and down to the... to the penny is very... actually very impressive in the... with such a large budget. So we really do quite a good audit review of our budget every quarter and to get the details of the changes. I'm really excited to see that we have $6 million additional dollars towards safety and security that came out of, I believe, our lawsuit against vaping, and that is going to be used towards all sorts of great ways, including panic alert systems, security camera... $600,000, sorry. Sorry, $600,000, not $6 million. I was a little too excited. So, $600,000, using towards security cameras, panic alert systems, and all sorts of other safety and security measures. So I think... I hear about that a lot from our constituents, and I think we all do, about ensuring our schools are safe and secure and our students feel safe and secure. So this is a great way of using some of that funding. So I'm excited to see that. And beyond that, I thank our budget staff again and Dr. Reed for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I, too, am very excited to see that allocation to security, because I do remember when... with the former board, when that... when that lawsuit was awarded to us, that was the goal, that it'd be utilized to help counter some of the harm that's been done. So very excited to see that. Just a couple of questions. I guess, Dr. Reed or Ms. Burden, the grants for $653, roughly $1,000, that has 3.5 positions for the Magnet Schools Assistance Program, can you speak a little bit about that? I am unsure what that relates to.
I believe that's the Montessori grant?
Yes.
Yes, we received a Montessori grant. I believe we have briefed the Board on that, and we do need to begin hiring for that.
I had made the connection. Thank you for that. And the other question was regarding the additional roughly $48,000 in the nutrition grant. How is that be... how will that be used? Is that earmarked for some particular activity or just back to the general Food and Nutrition Fund?
Ms. Burden?
I'm going to ask Mr. Muir to speak to that. We're going to have to get back with you on that.
I'm so sorry. Say that again?
We're going to have to get back with you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Maron?
Yes, thank you. I think, you know, I would love to see the Board talk more in-depth about the spending and the expenses and the budgeting. And really, it's not really a budget, it's what's gone out. So I think, you know, being really intentional and focused on talking about the spending and continuing to expand it to be a one Fairfax approach. I just can't help but read this third-quarter budget and think about what we're going to vote on in just a few weeks, and know that the funders, the County Board of Supervisors, have offered a shortfall of $150 million, which is really to pay for the raises for our staff and be more competitive. It's really the biggest thing in there. And people keep asking me, "Well, what's going to be cut? What are you going to cut?" Well, we really can't cut that much more if you want people in buildings teaching children. So I just wanted to confirm that the Board all knew the facts, you know, and the public as well, that we were all on the same page. So, you know, that middle school after-school programs we heard our students and community talk so eloquently about, it's $4 million in savings, and it's a program that supports 20... is it 23,000 students? However, I think a student, Dr. Anderson, told me that might not include our Mason District middle schools. So that could be even more than that. So again, $4 million to cut after-school programs for 12- and 13-year-olds. The VIP Summer Camp for students most in need. 16 crossing guards are proposed to be cut, which includes the crossing guard at Oakton High School. And if you know the tragic crash that happened at Oakton High School, it is... I don't understand. I have... I'm curious about that decision, what the data is. The data provided in the county's budget says it's because other surrounding jurisdictions do not have crossing guards at high schools. Yesterday, Chairman Jeff McKay announced a program to offer a $15,000 signing bonus for applicants to the Fairfax County Police Department. And I support public servants getting paid, but we can't balance the budget on our teachers' backs. So my wonderings are, will those hired officers have crossing guard duties, since they are police department employees? And why not offer a signing bonus to crossing guards? I'm aware that several vacant positions have been cut. So, you know, we've got a lot of people in the market looking for work. It seems like this could be a win, but I just have a lot of questions and would love if our Board could sit down with the County Board, as I voiced and asked for, but that hasn't happened. So I have a lot of remaining questions. So I'm glad that this third-quarter agenda can be accurate in what it is, but it's just hard to plan for the future when these cuts are being made without the budgetary justification. So I hope that we can continue to do that. Perhaps in the next fiscal year, we can have a better system to meet with the County Board and talk about the $13 billion in assets this School Board is tasked with stewarding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. I will take a quick turn. I appreciate colleagues elevating the investments that this budget review is making in safety and security with funding from the lawsuit that we entered into on vaping. We have other lawsuits that we're in currently around social media use by our students, and hopefully we'll see similar results there. I would note that it's a particular boon for this work around safety and security, especially for our elementary schools, because the work that we typically do, and perhaps Mr. Lambert or others can correct me if I'm wrong, is funded by grants typically. And so this is new money that is not part of the typical grant-making cycle that we engage in to fund these projects. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Much of the camera funding does come from grants.
So very much look forward to seeing these dollars pay off for the school division. I know that safety and security is of the utmost importance for all of us. So thank you all. We will go ahead and vote for the motion on the screen. Seeing no others. All those in favor? Ms. Maron, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Dixit, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Dunn, and myself? That is unanimous. The motion carries. Moving right along. Agenda Item 5.04, Action Item, Social Studies Basil Instructional Resources. That is a mouthful. I call on Dr. Reed for a presentation on the Social Studies Basil Instructional Resources.
Thank you, Chairman Fish. I know that our Instructional Services Division has put a lot of time and energy into this. So this evening, I've asked Ms. Noel Klemenko, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, to present the Social Studies Basil Instructional Resources that we recommend the Board approve this evening. Ms. Klemenko?
Thank you, Dr. Reed, and good evening, Chairman Fish and School Board members. Thanks for the opportunity to bring you some information about this adoption process. If... I'm going to just ask someone to click the slides. Thanks, great. So over the past year, we've conducted a basal resource adoption process as outlined in Regulation 3004. This includes collecting teacher and school input, it includes public review, convening of an instructional committee, which is a diverse group of stakeholders, and we'll talk more about that. We've also carried out the IT and security reviews necessary to keep our students and our systems safe. Next slide, please. What you see on the slide here is the outline... or the timeline, excuse me, the timeline of the multiple steps that our team has gone through as we've looked at basal resources. As you can see, we started about a year ago, and this whole process, hopefully, will wind up in us adopting books and implementing this fall. I'm not going to go through each of these lines. This is a similar process that we go through with all of our basal resource adoptions that includes many of the things I mentioned on the previous slide. Next slide, please. It's always important that we start with our educators in the classroom first as we begin these processes. So we reach out to our Social Studies teachers and our elementary classroom teachers, as well as our school leaders, to find out what are the must-haves, what would they really like to see as we purchase these new resources. And what you'll see up on the slide is basically that we heard clearly that they're seeking engaging materials that are integrated into our technology systems and aligned to the Virginia standards of learning. And just as a note, we are implementing new standards of learning at this time. So this is all at the... at the perfect moment to meet those new standards. Next. One of the hallmarks of our review process is the Instructional Resource Review Committee, as you'll see up here on the slide. That group takes a look at the books that have been submitted, and you can see on the slide that it's 60% teachers, 20% school-based administrators, and 20% community members. And those community members are the ones that this Board put forward to be part of this process. When the I... we call it the I... if you can go back, I'm sorry. When the IRC members are pulled together, we spend some time, like kind of norming about what we're looking for, to ensure that each of the members truly understand what criteria we're using, which would include SOL alignment, pedagogy, navigation design, and access and differentiation. Now the next slide. So the IRC, combined with our interviews with the vendors that we did during the IRC process, the public review, the feedback from the IRC, we landed on five different publishers. Okay? And I'm going to go through them relatively quickly, if you want to go to the next slide. I want to remind people that Attachment C is Attachment C that has detailed information about each of these books and why the IRC felt like it was the best book to recommend. So you'll see at the elementary level, grades 4, 5, 6, and let me just make a statement here. Historically, FCPS does not centrally purchase K3 social studies materials. We provide them with very robust materials from the county and offer other supplementary materials. But we do start the more formalized textbook types of books at grade 4, and you'll see that we've landed on two different publishers for those elementary grades. Five Pons for Virginia Studies and then SABIS for 5 and 6. You probably are aware that in grade 4, Virginia Studies is the topic, and so we really often have to go with a smaller publisher for those to really have the materials that are tightly aligned. So that would be our Five Pons. Our plan for these is to buy digital for every student and then one set of books for every grade level, so that they can be used for collaborative learning, small group kind of work, as well as to provide print when needed for accommodations or preference. The next slide. As we go into middle school, grades 7 and 8, we continue with SABIS for 7th grade, so we have that continuum for 5, 6, and 7. Digital and print class set here. So once we get into middle school, we do not purchase one per grade level, but it's one per class. So each teacher gets a set of print materials here in 7th and 8th grade. And in 8th grade, again, we're back to Five Pons, where we really want to make sure we have that Virginia government covered well. Okay? Moving on to high school. High school gets a lot more complicated in social studies. What we have in social studies up there at the top is our Standard and Honors courses. You'll see the World History, World History II, US History and Government. We have chosen SABIS for that. The plan is to buy digital and then print copies for each classroom, just like in middle school. Now, in social studies, we do allow substitutions for those honors and standards classes of AP World and AP US and AP US Government. So we also will centrally purchase those books, because those are courses for graduation. Once we get into electives, then those are school-based purchases. And you'll see our advanced placement and electives of the ones listed on here will all be from McGraw-Hill. You may be asking, "Where are the IB books?" Right? Where are the IB books? I don't want anyone to think that we do not support the IB. They do use some different types of resources that we have contracts already in place for IB, and we continue to work very closely with our IB schools to make sure their needs are met. The next slide is just a continuation of high school. We have more elective courses that would be school-based purchases, and then our one AP Human Geography that is also a potential graduation credit. So you can see that as we go through the different courses, it does get complicated. We have to work with a lot of different publishers to get the best... the best possible product for the different courses. Next slide, please. So as I said, in Attachment C, individual books have rationales why the group found them to be the best of all the submitted resources. Overall, what the IRC identified to be true about these books is the alignment to Virginia standards, which is incredibly important, but also a high-level engagement through, like, inquiry-based activities. We also need to make sure that the technical... the technical requirements that they can sign in through Schoology and to make things as seamless and easy for students and parents, that they meet the requirements for accessibility and cultural responsiveness, and that we ensure that each of these resources have the scaffolds and supports for our multilingual learners and students with special learning needs. There's also... there was also a desire to really look at the... and support geographic skills and awareness, because sometimes that is something that doesn't get as much time in our classroom. So those were some of the rationales for the resources. Next slide, please. So it's important, as we're all talking about budget lots of times, it seems like every day people are talking about budget, there obviously is a cost to purchasing these new materials, and we wanted to go ahead and share that today. It is important to realize that this is a seven-year investment. We literally will have these books and these online accounts for seven years, and that's typically the same schedule that the Virginia State Department of Ed looks and changes any standards of learning. So we try and line up the basal resource process with the standards of learning changes. And the final slide, I believe. So the next steps, and of course, we'll take questions here in just a minute, but the next steps would be for you all to vote, and should you choose to approve these resources tonight, we will be working to finalize the contracts and make the purchases in June and put everything in place for the next school year. We will go ahead and gain teacher access and PD and start that at the end of the year, where we have some staff development time after the students are gone. And then finally, full implementation in the fall for all the new resources. So that is the presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. All right. Get things started with Ms. Maron for a motion.
I move that the School Board approves the titles listed for the Social Studies Basil Instructional Resources as recommended by the Instructional Resource Review Committee and the Instructional Services Department Leadership as detailed in the Agenda Item on Board Docs.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. St. John Cunningham. Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, and I'd just like a clarification, Chair. I do have some questions. Would you prefer that I wait until after I...
No, however you'd like to use your time is fine.
Okay, thank you. So this... this is the second basal that this Board is approving. We approved the literacy basal, and the math one is forthcoming. So this is... it's important that we see the information publicly and have a chance to talk about it. I wanted us to be able to have any questions answered. to be able to have any questions answered, and while I am very confident in the process and appreciate the service of those who've been on the committee, including Lisa Ann Moore, who I appointed, and found it a very worthwhile experience, I just, I have some questions that I'd like to ask based on the feedback that I've heard. So, given that there is not a K-3 social studies textbook, how is consistency, quality, and anti-racism incorporated into the creation of those materials? And how is that even aligned to benchmark literacy's content, which has a very, you know, social studies-based content and approach? To the Superintendent, please.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Klimenko, I know that's a topic that you worked with. Would you please share what the committee's thoughts were on that?
Of course. And could you just repeat your first question? I couldn't hear it exactly.
Yes. So, given that there is not a K-3 textbook, how is consistency, quality, and anti-racism incorporated into FCPS's creation of the materials that are to be used?
So, I'll start with the second question first. You asked about Benchmark, and as a reminder, one of the strengths of our Benchmark Advanced Program is the science and social studies content that is included in the reading materials. And as soon as we adopted Benchmark, our elementary social studies started to work very closely with our language arts specialists to see what we could align chronologically, right? Because in the early years of social studies, it's more topical as opposed to like when you're doing history. So, we do what we can to align the topics to help that learning. We do provide to teachers, we provide to teachers planning and pacing guides that give them units and lessons and all of the pieces that they need to teach, to teach the social studies curriculum at K through three. And we do work with our specialist that specializes in cultural responsive pedagogy to ensure that those meet the standards outlined in our framework for Culture Responsive Pedagogy.
Thank you. Yes, I'm aware of the work that FCPS did as part of consortia to work on that culturally-sensitive materials. And I know that there was an audit of lessons that teachers had had access to that were many or some were found to be not appropriate. My question is, how are we ensuring consistency? Like, are you saying that every first grade's going to have the same content, just like Benchmark, or is it going to be the schools' choose?
So, we have, our elementary teachers are provided with curriculums, you know, they have multiple curriculum areas, right? And so, we provide them, we're providing them Benchmark right now that is a very tight curriculum. In social studies, we provide them the Planning and Pacing Guide that has the lesson, it has the resources, it has everything laid out for them. So, teachers don't have to go and find other things or bringing things in. Everything is prepared for them to use.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I feel like Benchmark is a lot more like this is it and everyone's going to do it. So, I do have some concerns. But, you know, regarding the print versus digital, the Superintendent has talked about having math textbooks and being that so critical. Forty books per set in a group for elementary, why then not the alignment to have paper textbooks if it's such an important thing for math, Dr. Reed?
Well, I think that, I mean, it's a great question. I would say that the topic of social studies and civics lends itself to a more fluid content in the sense that mathematics, the basic core math facts have not changed significantly in many, many years, whereas many of our history books are dated within several years in terms of the content they're able to cover. So, I think we tried to strike a balance with social studies to say, while we're going to provide textbooks, we also wanted an online option to make sure that we remain current. And I welcome Ms. Klimenko adding anything to that that the committee also discussed.
There are a lot of advantages in the digital products, right? A lot of supports for multilingual learners and a lot of supports for students with different learning needs. And we feel like we can really leverage that. We're not, you know, with the math, we've talked a lot about having that math book and sending it home and having that support parents and having that come back and forth. Social studies, in a lot of ways, is done in the classroom, right? It's done in a little bit more of a whole-class way and with cooperative learning or collaborative groups. So, I think we have the flexibility having the books, you know, especially for students who might need that for an accommodation or might have a learning preference. But, I think there's so many benefits to having a digital text that can provide that differentiation.
Thank you. Yes, I'm for the digital text as well. What's the plan to really integrate it with Schoology? The slide said seamlessly and easy for students and parents. I have not seen that exact thing happen yet. What's the plan? What's the professional development? Is that going to occur before the school year? Is it required professional development?
So, we will have professional development starting in June. We'll start to get sort of our early adopters in right after school's out to build some capacity at every school. And then we'll continue with professional development in August and then throughout the year. It will take us a little while to get to everybody. We don't have the same sort of big symposium like we did for Language Arts, but we do have a plan that is not only for this first year rollout, but knowing that every year we'll need to train people as they come into social studies. As far as the Schoology piece, what, you know, we've worked really closely with IT to establish sort of what are the things that we expect all vendors to have so that when, so kids can have single sign-on. They don't have to go over here to a textbook that when they go into Schoology, those things are, they work seamlessly. So, when they go into their account, they'll have access to their resources.
Well, that's great. I'm more concerned about how consistent it's being used teacher by teacher and in the classroom. So, that's an ongoing concern that I have.
Understood.
I'll just move quickly because I know I'm still going here. The feedback that I got from my committee appointee was there could be way more with teaching about diverse cultures, ethnic minorities, facilitating conversations about history that is difficult. I'm aware that the Holocaust has two paragraphs mentioned in the World History text and two pages in AP European History. So, I just, however, we're going to supplement and we've got, you know, we've talked about facilitating, we have a controversial issues policy. We really need to lean into this because it creates problems when our students can't learn how to talk about difficult topics. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. St. John Cunning, would you like to speak to your second?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, thank you. So, I would like to understand, will there be a physical textbook for every student in every grade?
There will not be a physical textbook for social studies, no.
Okay. I have a big problem with that. The committee strongly recommended a physical textbook and with digital resources as a supplement. I mean, I can tell you from firsthand experience, I've seen the digital social studies resources when it's digital only, and it is extremely superficial. And as a history major, I take issue with what was stated a few minutes ago, that history is much more fluid. I think there are certainly voices in our society today trying to misstate history. But, history is, you know, objective and should not be subject to constant reinterpretation. I think we need to stand up for history and stand up for history being taught in physical textbooks, which I believe every study and every teacher on that committee recommended as being superior to a digital resource. So, I will be voting in opposition to this recommendation because I believe, you know, tradition and studies show that children learn from textbooks, and the digital resources, when it's digital first, are clearly inferior to what's available in the textbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Anderson?
I just want to echo a few things that some of my colleagues have brought up. I'm a big fan of digital stuff in terms of supplemental information. However, I am a little concerned about the fact that our fourth graders who are in the SOL for history are not going to have access to textbooks in each classroom. So, I think at bare minimum, this would be something that we would need to continue working to expand toward, is because those kids are utilizing those textbooks more often where they can go back and forth more consistently. I'm also concerned about our AAP classes that are actually dual, I mean, most classes switch back and forth between science and social studies. So, in theory, they could probably share resources. So, even if we got another set or two in a grade level, you could have the classes switching back and forth so that they could utilize the resources at different times. Shuffling textbooks back and forth between classrooms is still problematic. However, for our AAP kids, they're doing both all day, every day. So, they do science and social studies in every class period or every day. And so, I think that that's another place where we need to at least evaluate whether or not those classes need to have a physical textbook because they tend to go a little bit deeper into the content.
So, thank you for raising that, Ms. Anderson. And I also want to respond to Mr. Dunn's comment. By fluid, what I meant was definitely not rewriting history, Mr. Dunn. But, we're in a seven-year cycle. So, seven years, we have a new presidential administration and so forth. So, sometimes books no longer have a current, you know, current history in them. So, definitely, we're not interested in rewriting. So, I just wanted to clarify that because sometimes we go longer than seven years if there are budget issues, and our books can become very much so out of date. So, that was my point. To Ms. Anderson's point around the different depth to which students might go, I think that's certainly a valid point and a wonder at this point in terms of looking at the budget and a redistribution of text versus digital, because, you know, we're paying for licenses or books. So, I think we could certainly take another look at that.
And as I said, like if we can continue to have supplemental information that is more fluid, a little bit more fluid in terms of building on things that are available, I'm all for those things as they develop. I think that when we're considering, particularly for the fourth graders with Virginia history, that's all, a large part of that is all based on what is being tested, and that is not unfortunately in our state currently. That is not as likely to be more innovative and fluid based on what's being evaluated. So, hopefully, these textbooks would have a longer shelf life than maybe other things. So, I think that looking at, I understand the cost-saving measure for fourth through sixth graders. I do get that. I just would love to see more kiddos have the opportunity to have textbooks in hand in those classes. So, if we could figure out even how to double it so that you could have two sets in each grade, then it would give more flexibility for staff to be able to use those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to what the Vice Chair Sandy Anderson has asked, providing extra print set for the fourth graders, how much extra would that cost?
I would need to do that calculation. And I do want to be clear, we have not written any contracts. So, these were just estimates based on what we're proposing. So, your feedback tonight can help us to determine if we need to buy more print or whatever. And I can get some additional costs, the per-book cost.
Okay, appreciate it. And a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Klimenko, thanks for sending me your response to a question that I posed related to basal textbooks adoption. But, that was, that actually had to do more with the curriculum rather than textbook. We purchased, textbooks are there to support teaching our students our curriculum. And as far as the social studies is concerned, in large part, that states, standards of learning dictates what we must at least to teach our students. My question goes to, in social studies, especially in world history, do we go above and beyond a state standards? If so, how much do you go above and beyond state standards?
Yeah, at this time, I mean, we really are aligned to the state standards. We don't choose other areas to branch off on. There may be opportunities where students have some choice, and they may take different pathways. But, as far as the units and the objectives in those units, they are tightly tied to the state standards or in the case of AP or IB.
Why do we take that position? Why do we? Because just a limited amount of time we have in the class to cover that everything that is required to be covered by standards of learning?
That is primarily the reason, right? We have a limited amount of time, and so, giving more time and being able to go in-depth in some topics as opposed to adding more topics.
I'm asking these questions because, you know, over the last three decades, I've been immersed in public education as a school board member, basically, that I have felt, I have felt all along that when we are teaching world history to our students, the amount of time, amount of time we spend teaching the history of certain parts of the world were grossly inadequate. And I'm going to give you an example of how we teach history of Asian nations. 60% of world's population are Asians. But, how much time do we devote teaching history of those nations, Asian people, to our students? And you also need to consider the demographics of students in our surface county. And I know, for standards of learning, that's something that we have to lobby if you want to change at the State Board of Education. But, I was hoping that we'd go beyond, above and beyond the minimum requirements by state standards. If you think that we just don't have enough time, I guess we must then work together to ask State Board of Education to make some changes.
So, I do think that that is always the most, I won't say it's efficient because the state doesn't move quickly, but it's definitely one way to approach it, to advocate with the state of Virginia, to build out different parts of the curriculum in different ways. There are certainly many advocacy groups that I think get involved every time new standards are written, and we'll see that shift a little bit where one thing might be covered more in one year and less the next time. So, I think that advocacy is one way. Obviously, we hear from many, many groups as a school division wanting and hoping to have more time and more focus in the different courses. And I think we would love to do that to the greatest degree possible, but we must preserve the base, which is the standards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Dixit?
Thank you for the presentation. I actually just had a question about some of the recommendations you have is also available in Spanish and some are not. So, I was just thinking about our multilingual learners, and we talked about that the language acquisition takes time, and having a textbook in their language. And we have a lot of MLs who are Hispanic students who are also, we're trying to make sure they are getting the content, and also while they're learning English, they can take tests and learn in their language. So, and so, I just wanted to know, we can keep it consistent that with all some grade levels there is, it's available. We have picked a vendor who provides a Spanish book. Some vendors don't provide that. Also, with the public comments, I kind of read few that there were a few which were saying like, oh, this is not the best book for them, but that is a recommendation. I'm talking about grade five and grade six recommendations.
So, just to address your first question, we wanted just the Board to see what is available in Spanish. We have not made all the decisions about how we might buy Spanish, where we might try some Spanish books. It's also important to realize that one of the strengths of the digital is that when you go into the digital platform, you can read it in many languages. So, we have a variety of languages available through the digital platform. So, that is a, yes. And the comments you're talking about, were those from the committee or were those from the public?
Public.
Yeah, the public. We had very few comments. Sometimes the public's very engaged in these processes and sometimes not as much. So, we did have very few. What we do with those comments is we take the comments and we share them. So, the IRRC will have all the comments to put into the sort of mix as they're making their recommendations.
And I know a lot of my colleagues said digital may not be good for the younger students. I agree with that, too. I think textbook will really help having in the classroom. But, I also think we should definitely use augmented reality for some of these history lessons and social studies and such. And if that is something, have you looked into that?
So, not- So not during this process, but I can certainly imagine, right? Like having sort of the augmented reality field trip experience. I think that would be something we would probably try on a smaller basis. I'm making an assumption, the cost would probably be cost prohibitive to do it right off the bat at a large scale, but it might be something that we could try. I have not seen any for social studies. I have seen them in some other subject areas, but it's definitely something that could be investigated.
And I know we have some global classrooms and global programs in F C P S. Do we talk to other schools, other countries about the history they're learning and have like a, you know, cross history lesson sometimes?
So with our global classroom, a lot of those exchanges are focused on the U N sustainability goals. But I think just in natural, I think it's probably more cultural than historical, but I think there's a lot of cultural exchange of information.
Okay, thank you so much.
But it was another opportunity, right? It's another opportunity.
Yeah, it is. In fact, I was very impressed with, my son was in his high school, in Centerville High School. He, he brought some papers home and it was so much knowledge about the Hindu, Indian history and Hindu mythology and history. And, and, and he was learning that in, in the, the classroom. And I, I, the material was very good. So I think there are some really good stuff as being taught to the students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to both Ms. Marin and Mr. Dunn, as well as Ms. Anderson, because some of my questions have already handled. But I will reiterate that I do think having a textbook for fourth grade students would be something that is optimal. Just to kind of dig into it a little bit more, what is the differential between the digital text and the physical text in terms of cost?
I haven't, but it's hard for me to answer questions and look it up. So I, I will provide it for Dr. Reed in the Friday letter. So it, there is, there is a differential. I just don't have it in my brains. I can, I can definitely look it up.
And is it significant? Because I'm imagining the digital is cheaper.
Yes. Let me just get, make sure I get it right. Because sometime, it's interesting, you would think that digital is cheaper, but the bundle, you know, there's the bundle, then there's the separate cost for items. So I just want to make sure I get it correct for you.
I would definitely like to have that information before I vote, because I think that's important to my, to my vote here. But I have some other information that I'd like to ask. Also in the presentation, you talked about shipping and professional development being separate. What is the cost of those two things?
So we have not negotiated on professional development and a lot, and, and I, I don't want to presuppose that and limit our negotiation power. I will say that shipping will probably be just under a million dollars. I know that sounds like a lot, but that is shipping to a hundred, to 200 schools, lots and lots of boxes is, is no small, small cost.
Okay. One of the concerns that I heard back from teachers when we rolled out the language arts was the lack of seats during the professional development for the summer. Those teachers who completed their professional development in the summer felt a lot more prepared to walk into the classroom. What is the plan to ensuring that everyone who wants to participate in the summer will have that PD opportunity? I was hearing that is not the case. You said there was limited, there were limitations.
There are lim, there, right now, as, as we speak, there are limitations to have a certain number from every school attend. And that is primarily because we don't, we do not have the same grant funds that we had to, to do the summer literacy program from the state of Virginia. We had the All In Virginia grant that we were able to fund the summer symposium for literacy last year. But what we will have is access to the materials and other resources available to them to, to start the learning on their own. And then we will kick it off in, in August.
Thank you. Can you please also share, students who are in AP schools and those who are in IB schools, are they subject to the same set of SOLs?
So as we speak right now, we do performance assessments. So it depends on, so yes, if there's an, if there is an SOL, they are subject to the same SOL.
Which is what raises my concern regarding not having any text for the IB schools. And I heard you say that you will work with the schools, but I don't know what that means.
Right.
I don't know what that means in terms of materials. Are they digital? Are they hard copy, the way that it's being provided for our AP schools? Is it going to be centrally funded? I, I need those details, please.
So I've taught, so when the team started working on this and they put out the R F P, they, there really weren't any IB books that even came forward, right? So, and that was a red flag for me. So the first thing I did is I started talking to the IB principals and said, what is happening in social studies for your IB classrooms? And some of the IB coursework has, there's some flexibility within the IB casework and of, I'm sorry, IB program. There's a lot of casework kinds of, of materials. So we have contracted with a different company, and I apologize, I don't have the name of it, for, to ensure that our IB students have the materials that they need. And, and the principals were saying they did not need to have a, a textbook like the AP. It's a different kind of course than the AP course. So they have different materials. I believe they are primarily digital. I do believe that they are primarily digital. And they have been, found that they are, are more than sufficient.
I appreciate that. But in going back in terms of our conversations regarding our school system, so when we have a presentation about a textbook adoption for the system, it needs to be fully comprehensive. And it has to include the, what, the presentation that is here must include what you've just shared with me, because I couldn't write it fast enough.
Understood.
One of the things that I do see as an, as a positive to the digital copies is the opportunity for translation. And I must, I must have misheard, but can you confirm if, if there is an opportunity for translation in a, in a different language? How many languages are there? And are students also allowed to take assessments in that language in that digital format?
So I do not know about the assessments and, and I will have to get you the, the number of languages. My team told me that it, there are many, many. It's not like six languages, but I don't have the, the list in front of me.
It's more than the eight that we frequently use.
Yes, yes.
So there's, oh, okay. Thank you. And the other piece is regarding the digital access for parents, because we do have some grades where it's only digital right now. How is that going to be better facilitated? Because I will tell you, as a parent who tried probably a few years ago and stopped trying to access the digital textbook, it's quite difficult.
Are you saying like even?
Or challenging.
No, thank you. Are you speaking about just being able to log in or you mean to navigate?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you mean to log in or to navigate the textbook?
Um, both.
Oh, both, okay. So I appreciate that feedback, of course. And I think the, the best way to approach that is to ensure, sometimes what we do is we put the information and, and forgive me, Ms. Marin, in Schoology, right? So people can go into Schoology and then parents would know how to do it. And then sometimes we can also put it on, on the internet. So if parents can just say online textbooks and it would give people the logins. So it depends on, it depends on the type of logins we have, but we can make sure that logins are accessible. Often there are videos that we can post so that parents can see. I understand that when you only are logging in once in a blue moon, it kind of feels overwhelming, like how do I navigate this? How do I find it? But if we can have, if we have some quick reference guides, like we do for some other materials online, hopefully that will help parents.
That would be helpful, particularly if there's some translations in other languages which parents could be.
Right.
Able to easily, more easily access, but not being able to get to them is, is a hardship. So hopefully you can navigate that. I, I, I was not my bound.
That's your time.
Okay, I'll let a go back, please. I have one more statement.
Thank you. I'll take a turn very quickly, just to set some historical background on this. See what I did there. So people may recall a few years ago when the Virginia Department of Education was wrestling and the State Board of Education was wrestling with the Virginia Standards of Learning and initially came out with, I think, a four or 500-page standards document that was riddled with errors, historical inaccuracies, and what many labeled as whitewashing Virginia and U.S. history, including eliminating references to Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth and many other problems. And as a result of that coming out, many educators across the Commonwealth spoke out. They started attending public hearings about the curriculum standards and the standards were changed and reduced down to 53 pages, with many of those inconsistencies, errors, and omissions addressed, but many left unaddressed. And so I'm, I am worried-ish about only aligning with the Virginia Standards of Learning. I realize that's not the only thing that we're doing. But I'd love to hear a commitment that the work in educating our students about social studies and history in our schools will, in addition to meeting the Virginia Standards of Learning, will also conform, comport with our educational equity policy and our strategic plan objectives?
Of course, yes.
That's good to, to hear and reassuring. And hopefully, you know, in the years ahead, we can ensure that Virginia's Standards of Learning for Social Studies and History fully encompass the, the complexities of our history. So I appreciate all the work that went into this from the community, from board members' comments and questions on this topic and look forward to the implementation. We have two go-backs. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. So I, I'd like to ask if, as part of the information for the Friday letter, if there could be a cost estimate obtained to provide a textbook to each child, not just available in the, you know, in the classroom, but to be able to take home. I, I had the pleasure of witnessing last summer, all of the books, thousands and thousands of thousands of books that were purchased and delivered to each school and organized at great effort, labor and time, to implement the new literacy curriculum. And that's because books help kids learn. And in the same way, we need to buy books and textbooks specifically to help kids learn history, because we can't rely on, you know, the little quickie videos they have in these digital-only curricula. And I also want to listen to the committee members who came together to emphasize textbooks with digital supplements is, is the preferred course of action. So if, is that something that, Dr. Reed, that you would be able to provide?
Yes, sir, I can provide that.
And, and Dr. Reed, in your experience, do you, I mean, you, you advocated textbooks for math. Do you, do you think that textbooks for social studies might also be prudent to ensure that kids learn comprehensive history? And noting that in every history class I ever took in elementary, middle and high school, we never got to, you know, the last 40 years. So updating for the most recent president, et cetera, may not be necessary, because mostly you get through the first two-thirds and then the school year is over.
So I am definitely a fan of textbooks and I'm definitely a fan of students being able to take those home. So I'll, I'll visit with staff about the possibility of doing that, depending on where the board lands on this this evening.
Okay. So may I ask a question to the chair? Does that mean that, given the, the cost estimates that have been requested, not just by me, but by others, that the vote on this motion should be delayed perhaps?
No, unless the board decides to delay the motion. But there's a motion on the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. That actually was one of my questions, particularly because I wanted to have greater clarity on providing those physical materials for grades, for the younger grades, as well as having greater clarity on what is happening with our IB schools. So I will be voting no to give you the time and space to revisit and rejig this a little bit. And I hope it can include some other discussions regarding the PD for teachers. I realize that there are grants we don't have access to, but if we're not setting up our teachers for success, what is it that we're expecting for them to be able to do? I, I didn't hear a clear plan. Is this a train-the-trainer model, whatever that is? And when, and whatever that timetable is, I hope that can be revisited. And I would ask that we provide a no to the superintendent on this tonight, so she could have a little bit of time and represent, and re-present with some of those answers, with some of those questions answered. Otherwise, I think we're kind of stuck to what we have tonight. So I will be a no.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Marin?
Dr. Reed, can you speak to what the outcomes would be if the board voted no on this this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Financially, timing, and like what's the status now of our social studies basal materials?
Well, we're within the cycle to order new materials. We did this evening, I want to, you know, Dr. Anderson, you indicated there were more things you would want in a presentation. So I want to be clear that staff really put this together very late. So I will own the responsibility for what was in or not in the presentation. I know staff worked very hard to put something together for this evening. I would then also say that part of why they did that was because the sooner materials get here, the sooner this spring, they can work with staff on developing them. However, having said all of that, I feel like, you know, if we need to wait two weeks and come back with a plan that is thoughtful, we do this every seven years. So we want to get it right. So I think better to do it well than rush if we're not sure. So the impact, Ms. Marin, is that we would be delayed in receiving the materials, but, so that's the impact.
Thank you. And when, do you know the last time that the, a board approved basal materials for social studies?
Ms. Klemenko, do you have that information? It would have been prior to my arrival. If this is 2025, I would guess seven years ago, it'd roughly be 2018, but.
I think it might have been eight years ago. I think we're a year late or a year behind.
Well, that's not as terrible, because I know we were quite behind with the literacy materials. So that's a relief. So, you know, I did pull this off of the consent agenda and I do think, you know, we need to realize that we need to see these materials. I believe I also pulled the literacy materials off the agenda back then so we could review them. And so the math materials, whenever we get there, should also be presented to us well in advance. It's just curious that this most intimate part of learning is not agendized and even a work session, really, right? I mean, I, so I'm, also just a point about printing. I was talking to one of our local book owners and she said, this was earlier this week, at the tariffs, lots of the printed books in color come out of Hong Kong and that would be a big price increase. It's something I didn't get to ask about in the budget session, just about how are we doing with prices on, on all the things? But I, I'm, I'm not as confident in this motion after the discussion. And so I hope my colleagues will also further discuss whether we wait or we move forward. So I hope you will all respond and give input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to delay the motion on the table to a date certain, which is the next meeting, April 24th.
Is there a second? Dr. Anderson seconds? Ms. Ma, Ms. 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 Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think that we've all made it clear that we want a little bit more information.
Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second?
Just one quick question. Will two weeks be, we, date certain, I'm assuming it'll be the next board meeting. Will that be sufficient time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of delaying to a date certain at the next board meeting, the discussion of this motion? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seizmarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Dunn, Mr. McDaniel and myself, that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for your work. Agenda item 5.05, New Self-Source Contract Teach For America Inc., Teachers Trained to Support High School, excuse me, High Need Schools. I call on Mr. Dunn for a motion.
I move that the school board approve the self-source contract to Teach For America Inc. for Teachers Trained to Support High Need Schools and authorize the division superintendent or the director of the Office of Procurement Services to execute, deliver and administer the contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Anderson. Mr. Dunn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. I, I really appreciate that the F C P S under Dr. Reed is continuing to explore every avenue by which to recruit new teachers to our school system. Teach For America is a very successful program that has existed for many years. And I think it offers the opportunity to continue to provide, you know, more teachers at a time when we're facing a local, regional and national teacher shortage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. I, I do appreciate literally the opportunity to exercise exploration of every avenue in order to grow our teaching force. I, that has to be commented, because we're in a place where things are challenging. My concern, which we did talk about a few weeks ago when you first sent this, is that these teachers are to be sent to our highest-need schools. That's the structure. That's how it's based. And the training, if I understand correctly, Mr. Solomon or Dr. Reed, the training for TFAs, it's a five-week summer course, and then they're sent to us. Yes, they are supported throughout the year by TFA, but it's five weeks, and then you're in front of the highest-needs students that we have in our county. I struggle with that. It's so counterintuitive. We've had conversation about, conversation after conversation in our budget work, where we talk about that we need to have those master's degrees teachers, because they are the best for our kids. And yet, it doesn't feel as if we're putting the best, and not to say that there are not TFA rock stars, there are. There are unicorns everywhere. But overall, the retention is not what we would like it to be, and all of that is available. I'm happy to send it to you all. And the preparation is definitely not what it, I would like it to be personally for our highest-needs schools. So I'm really struggling with it, knowing that we are just trying to grow the workforce in all ways possible. I, in all good conscience, when these are, these are teachers that are identified for Regions Two and Three, it will be our least, our least-prepared teachers in front of our highest-need students. It, it's, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around that.
So I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. I would say that our teacher trainees are actually less trained than our Teach for America candidates would be. The contract is for five Teach for America candidates who have a desire to be in education, and they do receive, as you indicated, the five-week summer course, but they are supported by Teach for America mentors throughout the rest of the year, which is actually even more support than we're able to provide our new teachers, or our beginner teachers, or our teacher trainees. So I, I feel like my experience with Teach for America has been amazing in terms of candidates. We still have the opportunity to interview and select the five we wish, so it's not just, you know, candidates provided to us. We'll have the opportunity to interview and have that final say. But I do believe that actually several of our leadership team members are Teach for America alums, who went in to teach for America and then developed and recognized a deep passion for education and then made it their life's work. So I often find that we acquire very mission-driven individuals that really contribute to not only the education of the children in front of them, but to the entire division.
No, I appreciate that. And if you recall, I had similar concerns with the teacher trainees. So for me, this is not new. But it does make me also wonder, some years ago, we were talking about the Call Me Mister program, which was, I think those were credentialed teachers already. Are we still looking at that in order to continue to grow our workforce? Because I haven't heard anything since, well, it's been at least three years.
One of the reasons you haven't is Dr. Wilson, on several occasions, reached out to that program and didn't receive a response back. We were also asked to check references or other business partners, and those calls didn't result in confidence that that would be a program that would bear great fruit here.
I see. I lost my train of thought here. I, I lost my train of thought. I'll have to go back.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Moon?
Dr. Reed, so how many, how many, how many teachers are you seeking through this contractor?
This first year of the grant is, we would be seeking five.
Just a five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You know, my concern with, you know, basically with the teachers from Teach for America is that they don't tend to stay as long as non-Teach for America teachers. And if, it's just like Dr. Anderson stated, if they are going to be sent to high-need schools, I think our own data also show that there is higher turnover in those schools for our regular teachers than other schools. And so worried about their, you know, duration of staying with us, whether it's going to even create higher turnover in those schools. That is my concern, but it's small number to begin with, so I'm willing to take that risk and see how that goes. Wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I'll take a quick turn. At the South by Southwest Education Conference, feels like six years ago, it was like a month ago. Ms. Marin and I had the opportunity to attend a session led by, or a conversation with the leader of Teach for America. And one of the topics that came up in that discussion was the efficacy of the program. In other words, are these just recent college grads who are taking this as an opportunity to serve and then enter another profession? And while a certain number of folks do that, more than 60% of Teach for America educators stay for more than two years, and about a third stay for more than four years. So I think it becomes something that's on us, to Mr. Moon's point about how long people stick around. I think it's on us as a school division to give these educators a reason to stay with us and to stay in the schools that they're placed in. And so I'm, I'm confident in the program, and I'm grateful for the work that's gone into finding every conceivable avenue of bringing people into the system. And hopefully, with the changes that we're seeing across the school division as it relates to hiring, retention, et cetera, these programs can bear even more fruit and perhaps even lead the averages that we see nationwide for the program. So thank you for bringing it to us. I have Mr. Dunn for a go-back.
Thank you. Do you know what your long-term plan is, Dr. Reed? Because I note, by comparison, we, we have the International Educator Program that started very small and has grown very substantially. Do you have a long-term vision for, you know, how many teachers you would like to ideally receive through Teach for America eventually?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. You know, this is a, it's a good question. It asks me to be a bit speculative. I will say that we were calculating just the number of education graduates in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and recognizing we hire over 2,000 teachers annually, there are not enough educators graduating from education programs in the Commonwealth to fulfill all the positions we annually have, you know, with 40,000 employees. So I, I think we're looking at five this year. I'd like to see how the program goes, how the supports work. Virginia is fairly new to Teach for America. Other states have been much more involved for longer time periods. So I, you know, it's a fair question. I think we would want to grow it from five. I don't know how many it will grow to, but we're going to have to look at non-traditional, non-traditional plans and systems to keep our schools fully staffed, because traditional programs just are not providing sufficient graduates at this time.
Thank you. I, I note that there was a RAN study of Teach for America in, in Indiana, and then it found that, on average, TFA teachers were more effective at increasing student achievement than non-TFA teachers, and had a demonstrable impact on student outcomes in English Language Arts and Math. So, so I think the data does show that the program is effective, and I note the positive comments by my colleague. And so for that reason, I greatly support this, this program and the introduction. I note it is being deployed in, in Region Three and Region Four, I believe. Is that correct?
It will be deployed in, generally speaking, in our Title I schools, and those, actually, we have Title I schools across the division. But I do think Regions Two and Four both have regional assistant superintendents who are TFA alum and have a special interest and heart for that program. So I believe that you're accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I, I finally find my thought. One of the opportunities that I've had in, you know, in my work in education was actually in the District of Columbia, was to work as the Director of Teaching and Learning, and that, that required for me to be in charge of all the professional development and coaching, which also involved the review of many of the TFA teachers, which DC has a huge number of. And the turnover is high. And the turnover is high because we are essentially having teachers who are not as trained as we would like them to be in front of our highest-need students. And I do believe that the record here says it's Regions Two and Three. Do I think some TFA teachers can be successful? Absolutely. I, I know that one of our folks that's in leadership can be, but overall, that has not been the case because of the turnover that has been as high. And past four years, it's actually 25%, and not necessarily a third. So that is a risk for me that is challenging to take when we are placing these individuals in front of our highest-need students. So Title I schools that are already under it are receiving, ideally, not, you know, the candidates we will be seeking, the candidates that we speak about all of the time during our budget processes, where we are recruiting and wanting to retain our, our master's-level, master's-level teachers. And I do envision, unfortunately, a future where, over time, our Title I schools will have a lot of these teachers, which really makes it difficult for all of the work that we do, which rely on that teacher expertise. We know that is the number-one impact to student learning. It's teacher expertise. And so I do have those concerns, and so I will be a no on this, because it is going to also be the schools that I represent that largely have this great core. And again, I do not want to be offensive to say that no TFA teachers cannot be wonderful, because that is not the case, because a lot of licensed teachers also have struggles. But I, I just have too many worries for this to work for me.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. St. John Cunningham?
So I have the fortunate, fortunate opportunity of knowing a lot of teachers that have participated in Teach for America, and I would probably guess that we have some that are teaching for us now through EduFuturo, because I know EduFuturo uses that program, and they are in our Title I schools. And I know that the retention rate for EduFuturo is relatively high. So to the extent that we do not have, you know, a lot of people that are graduating, and I really commend the job that we're doing to find teachers where we can. I participated last week with Hispanic Educators Association on how we're supporting the Participate Learning teachers. And I know that there's some very intentional work going on through HR, and I appreciate what they're doing. I appreciate the work that other organizations are doing to help support our teachers and in programs such as Participate Learning. And, and I know that the same kind of support will be there for teachers that come through this program. It's five teachers. I think we can be very intentional in supporting them. And again, I think we already have some of them teaching in our schools through EduFuturo.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Ms. Marin?
Yeah, I've, I think it's great to have the data about Teach for America, and Mr. Frisch, yeah, we did get to hear the founder talk about it, and it's only five teachers. And if they are surrounded by supportive, professional, you know, colleagues, plus the Teach for America program, I mean, we currently have empty spaces. I would think a Teach for America individual who is smart and motivated is more preferred than having a substitute as well-meaning as they are rotating in and out of a classroom, for instance, for a long-term sub. So I'm willing to go for the pilot and see how it goes, and I do expect that they'll be fully supported.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. Moon?
Just one quick comment. I know that your intention is to put them in the high-need schools. Maybe that's how we start, but if needed, you know, they can be replaced, non-high-need schools, non-Title I schools.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right, we will go to a vote for the motion on the screen. All those in favor? Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Dunn, Mr. McDaniel, and myself. All those opposed? Dr. Anderson? The motion carries. It is adopted. Thank you very much. Agenda item, actually, we're going to take a 10-minute break, recess, before performance evaluation. So we will be back at 9:15. All right. Agenda item 6.01, Performance Review Asset Protection EL7 Monitoring Report. Each year, the school board assesses the superintendent in part on the basis of the school division's reasonable progress toward achieving the 2023 to 2030 strategic plans' goals and adherence to a set of 13 executive limitations found on pages 14 through 31 of the board's Strategic Governance Manual. The superintendent provides annual monitoring reports to the board for each executive limitation. The board then votes on whether the provided report is in compliance or if corrective action is needed. I call on Dr. Reed for a monitoring report of Executive Limitation VII, Asset Protection.
Good evening, Chairman Frisch, members of the board and the public. Tonight, as Mr. Frisch mentioned, I'll be presenting Executive Limitation VII, which discusses asset management. This EL is named for you on the slide, and I want to reiterate that at the time of this report, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, I've gathered information and evidence that I believe supports compliance with the board's executive limitation associated with this topic. And this evening, I will share some highlights. If you're listening at home, the full document is attached to Board Docs, and I appreciate the staff work in helping to put it together. There are nine areas of EL7. This slide shows the first four, and indicators five through nine are on this slide. Additionally, tonight's presentation includes updates on last year's EL7 corrective action plan. This evening, I'll be sharing selected indicators, even though the entire report is online. Indicator one ensures that the division assets are protected, maintained, and properly disposed of or recycled when no longer in use. This year... This year, our warehouse team created a rapid action plan that focused on procurement analysis and vendor engagement, successfully mitigating impacts through cross-training multiple members in the staff to buy and maintain continuity, including instituting weekly review meetings to prioritize needs and improve vendor relationships. This expanded the team's procurement knowledge, which created a stronger and more adaptable workforce. Indicator 4 of this EL focuses on the protection of division assets, which honestly are comprehensive in nature. Currently, our comprehensive school boundary review website provides transparency through readily accessible information about this really momentous process. In March of this year, in conjunction with the Fairfax County Government, we did launch the School Bus Arm Camera Program to boost safety. Want to give a shout out to our Chief Operations Officer, Andy Muick, who really drove this process. You like that, Mr. Muick? I got that. Oh, come on. Drove this process and worked really tirelessly to get to an agreement with multiple stakeholders so that we're able to launch this program. It is designed to reduce the number of violations and injuries caused by people who disregard the school bus arms being out and create really dangerous situations for our students and our staff. We know that most injuries during transportation occur during boarding and disembarking the buses. Continuing on with indicator 4, I want to highlight the work of our Office of Communications, who worked with our schools to create sort of a top 10 or 10 highlights, which showcase things that their school communities were proud of. And I know we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from community members, because our schools are unique, even though they're part of a school system. Each of our schools have unique contexts and unique pride points that we love to see them share. We also note that we're sending positive story roundups to the board and division leaders, and ensuring that staff are aware of the appropriate use of the FCPS logo and branded materials. Indicator 8 talks about how we utilize knowledge management to ensure assets are known, maintained, and transferred. Want to share that since last year's report, the Office of Facilities Management has developed and implemented over 35 new standard operating procedures. Honestly, that's a lot in one year to create systems of efficiency. The Office of Assessment and Reporting maintains the FCPS Guide for the Virginia Assessment Program as the knowledge management of federal and state-required assessment and accountability procedures and expectations continue to grow and honestly continue to change. And as of October 2024, our employee exit surveys are now administered digitally during the offboarding process through Staff Connect. In August of 2024, the board approved a corrective action plan for this EL, which included work on our knowledge management processes. Since then, the Office of the Chief of Staff has initiated several actions related to this work, including the development of a Baldridge Framework application, an inventory of existing documentation of major activities in the division, development of a standard division-wide onboarding and offboarding procedures, creating standard templates for standard operating procedures, project management plans, and new hire handbooks, as well as the identification of opportunities to further embed this work throughout the division. Staff took seriously the corrective action memo the board required last year and have acted prudently in responding to this. Indicator 9 is about the annual review of existing leasing agreements, contracts, MOUs, and other agreements to ensure assets are being used in accordance with the division's strategic plan goals. As directed by the board, the Office of Facilities Planning Services prepared a lease consolidation plan, which provided background information and options to support any future review of leases, to determine necessity, cost analysis, and alignment to the division's strategic plan. And also, as part of last year's EL 7 Corrective Action Plan, Division Council has conducted an analysis of best practices for our memorandums of understanding. Based on this analysis, we've updated FCPS practices on memos of understanding in several areas, as you can see on the screen. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation for Executive Limitations number 7 Asset Management.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I now call on Ms. Dixitt for a motion.
I move that the school board finds the superintendent in compliance with Executive Limitation number 7 Asset Protection. I further move that the school board approves the monitoring report based on the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of Executive Limitation number 7 Asset Protection as outlined in the Strategic Governance Manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon. Ms. Dixitt, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, no.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Mr. Moon, we'd like to speak to your second.
I just have a question, can I ask? I don't know whether this should go to Dr. Reed or Mr. Muick. As to asset management, I'm sorry, this is all asset management. I'm talking about number one. My question goes to a disposing and recycling part. We have a lot of computing devices given out to students, also to STEM members, and every, what, five, six-year cycle, we do replace them. What do you do with replaced computing devices?
So, great question, Mr. Moon. I know that many of our computer devices are on a lease plan, so I'm going to ask Mr. Sethi to talk about the life cycle of our computers.
There's quite a few different things we do. First and foremost, when the devices come off of rotation from primary use, we try to see if they have usable life and repurpose them to be able to reallocate to someone who could be using it for different purposes. So sometimes they can go longer than five years. If there's not primary life because of the, you know, there's damage to some parts and pieces, our repair shop actually scavenges as many of the parts off that laptop and preserves it to repair other devices, because we typically buy 5,000 of the same models, so we have enough of those parts to repair. At the end of all of that, there is a process of disposal, where the hard drives are moved and they're separated, so no data is disposed, and then the physical sort of whatever's left of the device is shipped to the warehouse for disposal appropriately through the warehouse process.
Okay, because I recall a few years ago, a number of years ago, there was, you know, unfortunate incidents of, you know, some of our inventory items being not properly disposed of.
Yes, sir.
And I'm hoping that that doesn't ever happen again, but at the same time, you know, those properties must have or have some values to someone outside the school system, even though we are not using them. And I think when we're talking about properly disposing and recycling, that we make a maximum use of those, that when I say maximum, not just for us, but those who may have some value, may see some value in using some of the assets that we may not be using, but could still be used by somebody outside.
Yes, sir. I do, I am aware of the incident that you're referring to, and that led to a review and look at processes which have been enhanced since that incident, and it shouldn't happen again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you very much. Let me just get a minute to pull up my notes here. I apologize, I cannot find it. One of the things, I'm just going to be super brief here. I think the entry plans that have been identified in this measure are very helpful, because I think it's a great way to really streamline a principal's interactions with the community and how, in that we will kind of march together. So I'm very excited about that development and looking forward to its expansion. And as we discussed, I will not be voting in support of this EL based on information that I shared with you in closed session, but there's some good stuff here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the School Bus Stop Arm Camera Program. I believe it's currently marked for 50 buses, and I think that's a small fraction of our total school bus program. Can you share any plans you might have for expansion of the program over time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dunn. We started with 50. I think originally, the plan was to start with 250, but what we realized in the negotiation is that our Fairfax County law enforcement partners needed, and I think fairly so, we needed to get the program underway for them to determine the amount of time and effort it would take on the part of law enforcement to be responsive, as well as the part of the courts to be responsive. So we're starting with 50, and with the expectation that once we identify the time required to manage the program effectively, we would gradually grow it.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll just say, on the street where I live, when the stop arm is extended of a school bus, people drive around it both ways. And it's shocking to me that in our country, that student safety is put in such jeopardy on a daily basis by reckless drivers, especially on a neighborhood street. So I really appreciate that Mr. Muick and Paul Dandray, you know, enabled one of the Stop Arm Camera buses to be deployed in my area to help deal with that crisis, along with resources from SCPD. I was also wondering if you could please talk a little bit more about the top 10 lists that have been developed for each of the schools, because I think it's a remarkable program and a remarkable accomplishment by the communications team.
So, thank you, Mr. Dunn. And I also, you know, big shout out to Mr. Dunn, who was part of the thought partner on this topic. It was, I think Mr. Dunn has said several times that, you know, we've done and continue to do great work, but if we don't talk about it, sometimes it's not obvious to everyone. And so I appreciate, Mr. Dunn, your encouragement on that, and I'm proud of our communications team, Lisa Hall and Beth Fazoli and Tracy Nguyen and the team that has done that work, and honestly, all of the principals across the division and their staffs, who really put together, I think, some very unique lists. But it also speaks to how much more our schools are than numbers, right? Because so many of the lists have moments and sort of attributes that aren't about traditional data, but really help make our schools something special here in Fairfax. So I appreciate you drawing attention to that.
I think it's so important when we have so much negativity on social media about our wonderful public schools that this top 10 list was developed so for every school, parents and students can see, what are the top 10 reasons this is the best school for my child to attend? And the top 10 lists, and I've read probably, you know, 50 of them by this point, are really remarkable, and they're very individually tailored, and they can reflect just all the amazing things that are happening in our schools. And unfortunately, too little of that gets publicized in the kind of morass of social media. So I do encourage all Fairfax County residents to learn more about your local schools and spread the word, because, you know, talking to people, having conversations, can help build greater trust and spread the knowledge of the daily excellence of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you, and don't worry. First, I want to say I really appreciate the inclusion of all the work you've been doing on knowledge management, because I know that was an area I had concerns about last year with the report. So I really appreciate the inclusion of the work that has been done, as well as the work you're talking about continuing to do. So this is great, and I really appreciate that there's 35 new operating procedures, SOPs, since the last report, and there's a task force for those SOPs. I really do think, once it's all in place, you're going to have a much more streamlined operation, which will save costs and time and make you more effective. But I had a couple of questions. I saw that the Baldridge Framework, which I know is the budgeting and just sort of the overall audit and review of our budgeting process, is going to include a review of operations and areas identified for improvement in knowledge management. Can you talk a little bit more about how that process is going to look towards looking at the knowledge management processes?
Yes, ma'am. The Baldridge folks actually are going to be in the division the week after spring break to do some interviewing and do some shadow working. Mr. Smith, our Chief of Staff, has really been spearheading this work, and I'd like to have him respond, maybe more specifically to your question.
Certainly. And so we're looking forward to providing the board an update. You can see in our report that we will be submitting our 25-page application in April, and we'll certainly provide that to the board in a Friday letter, so that you can get a gist of some of the topics that are covered as part of the Baldridge work. The knowledge management piece, there is an aspect of that around data and data management. There's also an aspect of that as we on the leadership team are engaging in the work with the Baldridge team. We're actually noting that work and keeping track of that work, and are adding that work to the database of SOPs and other structures that we're building to ensure that we hold on to that knowledge of our team as they might come on or go off the team.
That would be great. As I said, I think building this structure, or continuing to build this structure, will make, you know, our team much more efficient and effective. And when there is turnover or promotions and things like that, make it more easy for someone to be able to jump into the work right away. So I appreciate that, and it's great as part of that structure as well, because I hope they'll have some recommendations as well of changes or areas.
Ironically, one of the strongest bodies of evidence for knowledge management are the ELs. And I think that's been noted, that coming into a system and being able to see the work of the system in every critical area, as well as the goal direction, has really captured knowledge management in ways, you know, that we might not traditionally think about it.
Well, thank you for bringing that idea to us when you came on board. No, you deserve the kudos for bringing that idea to us, and the board took it and ran with it, but it was a great way of really capturing what we're doing in all these critical areas. One last question is just a suggestion. When you're looking at knowledge management, I know you've been looking at it in terms of SOPs for your leadership team and your central office, but one of the things that I've often heard, and this is before I even ran for this position, teachers talk about is a knowledge management for some of the lessons and resources that are being created, especially for teachers who are having to modify or adapt lessons. They often have to, you know, I've heard teachers talk about having to recreate the wheel every year, and I know there's obviously, there's always going to be some tweaking to make it individualized for students, but if you had at least a starting point, it would make it easier for teachers to recreate it. And I've often talked to teachers about a central repository for some of these, either lessons they've created or materials they've created, especially, like I said, those that have to be modified from the genetic curriculum. So I just want to put that idea out there as a knowledge manager that could really help our teachers and staff out as well.
Thank you. I'll note that, and it does seem with the tech online world we live in, that we could capture those accommodations or those lessons that are modified or accommodated.
Well, I know some teachers have started their own repositories to share, and all sorts of things. So I know this thing's out there, but it would just help, especially as we have so many newer teachers in some of these areas, it would probably really help them both do well the first few years, but also maybe stay, because they're not doing so much work to create something that someone else has created. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. When you were saying not recreate them, what I was thinking, and we forgot to put in here, so we're going to add next year, is the warehouse for our theater props, because we've, Ms. Samansky and Mr. Muick have combined. I've actually seen a lot of the props out in the warehouse as we're transitioning to that, so I'm very proud of them and their work in bringing that.
That's awesome. I'm glad you mentioned that, and since you mentioned it, I'm going to also make sure the word is getting out to our theater departments as well about that resource for our theater departments. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. We will take a vote for the motion on the screen. All those in favor of the motion as listed on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunnings, Mr. Dunn, Mr. McDaniel, and myself, all those opposed, Dr. Anderson. The motion carries. Moving right along. Agenda item 7.01, I will remind board members to complete their evaluation form at their own discretion. They can turn it in to the clerk or fill out the online version. Agenda item 7.01, Policy Review Asset Protection EL 7. The next order of business is the policy review for EL 7 Asset Protection. Annually, the board will review each executive limitation at the time of the monitoring report is provided to determine if revisions are needed. Board members may offer amendments to executive limitations at any regular meeting, provided they send final amendment language to the board and clerk 48 hours in advance of the meeting at which it is to be considered. At this time, no amendments have been submitted in advance of the meeting, but board members are able to make remarks on EL 7 Asset Protection as a policy before we vote on maintaining the current language. as a policy before we vote on maintaining the current language. Seeing none, I call on Ms. Dixitt for a motion.
I move that the school board maintains executive limitation 7 asset protection as it is currently detailed in the strategic governance manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon. All those in favor for the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Mr. Dunn, Mr. McDaniel, and myself. That is unanimous. For board members present, the motion carries. Agenda item 8.01, academic matters. I call on Dr. Reed.
So, thank you Chairman Frisch and members of the board. This evening, I have the real pleasure to talk about our Purple Star Schools. As it is our Purple Star Month as well, and having over 13,000 military-connected students here in Fairfax County, our Purple Star School initiative is really an exciting initiative. I want to remind our community that military-connected youth do move around more than other youth. And I like to think of that honestly as a strength, the building of resilience, our empathetic, military-connected youth, and often service-minded. We've really had some great focus groups with military-connected youth, as well as families. But there are also challenges. Even though they move around and change schools three times more than their civilian peers, while it builds resilience, it also, in fact, at times can create learning gaps or overlaps. It can be stressful, and it certainly, if parents are deployed or in circumstances that may not be safe, it creates a level of anxiety, I know, for many of our young people as well, because when anyone in the family is serving, really everyone in the family is serving. So we also want to note that 80% of America's military-connected youth do attend public schools. So just want to point out that our four pillars continue to be important in how we continue to utilize Purple Star School programming. In Goal 1, Purple Star Schools provide intentional support through transitions, while Goal 2 supports peer-led student ambassador programs, which amplify student voice and support a positive school climate. Goal 3, Purple Star Schools utilize available evidence-based practices to provide access to academic rigor, as well as supports that celebrate the experience military-connected students bring. In Goal 5, or Goal 4, Purple Star Schools are responsive to military-connected students' lived experiences, strengths, and needs. And in Goal 5, our Purple Star Schools prepare military-connected youth for on-time graduation and a wide variety of post-secondary opportunities. The Purple Star criteria are on the slide. And in addition to the central office staff support, schools must meet other criteria to receive this designation. And these include a school point of contact to serve as a liaison, a peer-led transition team, a division military webpage, specialized support for students with special needs, and staff receives special professional development to broaden their understanding of the needs of military-connected students. Schools further must engage in special military observances, such as the Blue Star Welcome Week, Veterans Day, or the Month of the Military Child, as it is this month. So I want to show you the map of all of our Purple Star Schools. And the central office team continues to provide ongoing support to these schools as they fill out their requirements for designation and retain that designation. The application period, for those of you for your magisterial districts or at-large, the application period opens this month in April and it closes in September. This school year alone, the team provided 29 Purple Star application workshops, 11 student ambassador trainings, and training kits for, and toolkits for celebrations, as well as recognition and designation topics. So here are our statistics for Purple Star Schools since 2018. You can see on the far left of the chart where the number of Purple Star Schools we had. We currently have 96. And of those 96, multiple schools have renewed their designation at least once. We have a two-year plan, which has come from the superintendent's desk, which requires that every school will become a Purple Star School by the end of next year. So we expect to reach 150 Purple Star Schools in October of 2025, with the remaining schools earning their designation in 2026. It's important that every single school, all 200 of our schools, are Purple Star designated, because we have military-connected youth attending every school in the division. Whether it's two students or 200, it's important that they feel welcome. So I feel like I want to really thank our staff, who have done, Renee LaHuffman-Jackson's here, Dr. LaHuffman-Jackson, and Ms. Hall. I mean, we started with less than 20, and we're already at 96. So props to that team. And props to all of our school-based staff that are doing the work. Want to share the impact, creating a welcoming culture, fostering connections. It's just, it's really, our military-connected youth get really excited when they talk about being a Purple Star School. It means something. It's not just a designation. So as we continue to look at families who appreciate that, we have this year begun a military family advisory committee with Dr. LaHuffman-Jackson's guidance again. And we've been able to resolve challenges that some of our military families have had, as well as a big shout out to Mr. Sethi and his team, because we created a lot of online registration opportunities for our families transferring in and out. And Ms. Hall and our central registration team being able to provide a seamless enrollment from anywhere around the world. We're very proud of the progress we're making. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. We'll start with our military-connected vice chair of the board, Ms. Anderson.
So my kiddo, the other day, when we were doing the Purple Up at his school, he decided that he was going to send himself down, because he knows that his father is military-connected. My husband retired in 2019. And what I found out later is that he wasn't actually included on the list of kids that were military-connected, because we only have a designator and CIS for active-duty members. And so I'm wondering if we can maybe expand that, so that when people are registering, they can let us know whether or not they're from a retired family. And that way, those kids that are military-connected through a retired family member, it may be a cool thing to be able to include them on more things as we're going through. But I love that we're doing this. I think it's awesome to help support these families in every way that we possibly can. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Dunn?
Well, I just want to say thank you to FCPS and the superintendent for everything you're doing to ensure that military families receive all the support they can, because they face unique challenges. And as the father of three kids who are either in the military or going into the military, I am especially proud of the military service in our community. And it's not just the folks who are active-duty, who are serving, it's the spouses, it's the children as well, because they are uniquely affected, moving frequently, and adapting to new environments, and always supporting the military in various ways, large and small. So I look forward to working with you, Dr. Reed, to continue to strengthen the ways in which we can support and serve our military families, to make sure that we make it easy for them to arrive, and we wish them well when they depart for other destinations. And while they're here, they receive robust support and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Seeing no others, we'll move right along to agenda item 8.02, strategic plan update. I call on Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. And again, very excited to talk about our strategic plan update. And this evening, I'll be talking about the collaborative work under the Chief Experience and Engagement Office that's being led by Dr. Renee LaHuffman-Jackson, the Director of Family and School Partnerships, and Angie Aldave, the Director of Community Relations. And this is really an exciting opportunity this evening to look at Pillar B, which is our vibrant homeschool and community partnerships. And this evening, I'll be highlighting our FCPS Family Academy. So the Office of Experience and Engagement helps FCPS create a positive student, parent, staff, and community experience. In August of 2024, the office launched the FCPS Family Academy to improve and enhance homeschool collaboration. This academy serves as a one-stop site where families can connect, engage, learn, and receive support, both virtually and in person. These resources empower families to navigate FCPS and support student learning at school and home, which at the end of the day is leading us to our strategic goals. When we look at the Family Academy impact, you can see what it's had since August of 2024 through March of 2025 in the Learn With Us section of the academy. Over 250 sessions have been offered to support family engagement, and the programs have been provided over three, eight, and 10-week sessions with specific family education curriculum to support school attendance, school readiness, disruptive behaviors, the extinguishment of those behaviors, not supporting the behaviors, and reunification. Their programs have helped families navigate formative experiences in their children's lives, such as early literacy and home instruction for families of preschool youngsters, Parent Project, Getting to Know FCPS, and other programs. The Family Resource Center also continues to offer a vast array of webinars for families through the academy. At this time, we're going to hear a little bit more about the Family Academy. Madam Clerk, please play the video.
Established in August 2024 by the Chief Experience and Engagement Office, the FCPS Family Academy was created to strengthen homeschool partnerships and support student success. By bringing various learning opportunities under one umbrella, it helps families navigate Fairfax County public schools and better support their child's education. The Family Academy brings together a variety of classes, webinars, workshops, and programs offered by FCPS, equipping families with the tools to support their child's needs and learning at home. Additionally, it provides valuable information on available resources to ensure that every student has what they need to thrive.
The Family Academy is a curated hub of resources for families that we work cross-departmental and across offices to provide to families. Families told us that they wanted an opportunity to connect with other families and support their child's learning at home.
Through the Family Academy, you can find virtual and in-person classes and programs like Home Instruction for Parents of Preschool Youngsters, also known as HIPPI. HIPPI helped Rosie Amaya recognize her son's strengths and areas where he could grow.
I can now have a conversation with his teacher and, you know, let her know he has difficulty in, let's say, counting till 20, or he loves science. I've learned that learning is everywhere, and it could be simple and fun.
Rosie also participated in the Family Academy's Early Literacy Program. Early literacy classes are offered in multiple languages. The Family Academy offers other multilingual programs, too, including Getting to Know FCPS, a family orientation.
Getting to Know FCPS provides a perfect avenue for families to have a strong start in FCPS. We create a space where they feel welcomed. Our goal is to ensure that families walk away with an understanding of how to navigate FCPS by the end of this interactive orientation.
가장 크게 도움을 받았던 것은 페어팩스 카운티에 대한 어떤 전반적인 이해와 또 분위기에 대해 이해였습니다. 아울러, FCPS가 추구하는 방향을 좀더 알게 되었고, 그로 인해서 여러 가지 정책을 좀더 이해할 수 있었습니다. 가장 인상적이었던 점은 패밀리 리아존이었어요. 학교에 다니는 건 학생들이지만 온 가족이 학교 생활에 대해서 좀더 관심을 가질 수 있게끔 문을 할짝 열어놓고 또 항상 도와줄 수 있는 사람이 있다는 것이 굉장히 안심이 되었습니다.
The Family Academy is successful because we honor the feedback from our families. We are always looking for ways to grow and improve. We're working with them to design opportunities and resources that they tell us that they need.
Teba Jumeli attended a workshop called The Parent Project and participates in monthly webinars offered by the Family Resource Center.
나는 쇼크라 진다. 그거 하면, 줌하고 그들 말로만 봄에 한 와일드. 아스헬 우 아프다. 를 루소를 하지 말고, 뭐라서 써서. 쇼크라 페어팩스 카운티.
Excellence, Equity, and Opportunity.
So it's pretty impressive work, and it happens often without a lot of fanfare. But I want to make sure that you know I'll continue to be delivering reports and sharing the progress. And what we continue to be committed to, keeping our community informed about this work, and a reminder that we're going to be presenting Goal 5, Leading for Tomorrow's Innovation, at the April 24th School Board Meeting, and that is our last and final goal presentation of the year. So, Mr. Chair, this concludes our April strategic plan update.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. The Family Resource Center, do we rely on mostly hourly employees to run the programs?
I believe that would be true, Mr. Moon.
Okay. Based upon some conversation I, anybody else that?
No, I believe that's-
Yeah, based upon, you know, some conversation I had with some staff members in Early Literacy Program. Some challenges include, because we are providing only hourly rate, just a few hours a week, and it's not throughout the entire year either. It's a broken up into a segments of few weeks at a time. It's difficult to keep staff to stay in the program too long. I mean, they'll get, they come in and do it, get trained, and move on to some other positions. Any thought?
Well, yes, sir. I mean, that's true. It is a challenge. And the programs are not year-round, as we shared. Sometimes they're three-week, six-week, eight-week, 10-week programs. So we would have to look at adjusting the programming to pay more hourly, more of an hourly rate, or to make positions salaried. So I think with this current budget time, which I'll talk a little more about in our next item, I don't see a lot of room for changing that program for this year. But I think if we want to think about a multi-year program to enhance that, they also would connect to preschool, I think, in some cases, the Early Literacy or HIPPI program. But you're correct. I mean, there's a turnover of staff, and people often want more hours. And so I think that is a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge for our family liaisons.
I hope that you can bring that up for discussion, maybe not for this upcoming budget, but the following year, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Dixitt?
Dr. Reed, this is amazing. I believe that the relationship between the family and the school system is very integral to, for student success, too. And especially for a lot of immigrant families and who are coming and with language barriers, it's really good to see that different languages, you know, people speaking when they're in participation. And my question was this, most of these programs are geared towards preschoolers or younger, I guess, K3 or K4. I feel like connection of the family and the parent is the family, and the school is lost a little bit in the middle school and high school. So is there a way to bring those people also in this conversation or have events? And I understand, it's not easy. But I just feel, as a parent, I did not have that much of involvement with my son's school in middle school and high school.
I think you've raised a great point. And I, as a former high school principal, I used to tell parents, it's a time our children most need us. We think it's younger, but I think it really is very often as they get older, right? So I'm going to turn to Ms. LaHuff, or Dr. LaHuffman-Jackson, to talk just a minute about what we do provide for middle and high school. More likely, I think, families moving into the division, but I will ask her to share what is available in middle and high school.
Sure. The video highlighted some of our programs, and those weren't all of the programs. And you are correct that those were highlighting our school readiness programs. However, at the middle school and high school level, we have programs like Parent Project. And Parent Project works with families around attendance and some of those other issues of support around supporting their child. Programs and classes are one- Programs and classes are one aspect of the Family Academy. We also have workshops that are targeted to middle and high school. We recently held sessions in the Edison and the West Potomac Pyramid around, "I'm a middle school parent, now what?", trying to help our families transition from elementary to middle school. And at the end of the month, there's going to be a session, a workshop session at Robinson, and we're going to be taking that around to all of our pyramids. So, there are workshops and programs for the middle and high school. However, the video highlighted these early school readiness programs.
Thank you for the answer. And last question is, there's so much of information overload, there are messages going out from school, and I don't know if this is, how are you able to get to the families? Like, it is because, I'm sure they're getting ton of communication, so what is being successful so far?
Dr. LaHuffman-Jackson?
So, we work with our communications team through a lot of marketing, through our FCPS This Week communication. There's always a section around the Family Academy and all the offerings. And the Family Academy is designed in six areas, and the Learn With Us is one of catalog, but we also have resources and tools and other sections of the academy. We, in this Principal's Toolkit Weekly, there's also information that goes out for principals to put that into their communications so that we can have a broader marketing around the division.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Ms. St. John Cunningham?
Excuse me.
I'll come back to you. Sorry. Dr. Anderson?
I'm going to get her some water. Okay. Very quickly, the Parent Project, is that the initiative that exists at Anadale High School? Because I did have an opportunity to visit that probably a year, two years ago, and it is really great, and our parent liaison's a huge part of that. And just for everybody's verification, there's a component where there's dinner that's provided, so parents and students are able to have a meal together, then they separate, and the students engage in their learning to further their academics, and the parents engage in learning to help support their students, and then they come back to discuss how they're going to be working together. It is actually one of the most powerful things that I've seen, and so having an opportunity to expand that, because I do not know how many high schools provide that. Dr. Hoffman-Jackson, can you articulate how many schools have that?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I can tell you it's at many of our high schools. This year, we also partnered with our colleagues in social work for our Virginia All-In Grant, and we've been able to spread it further. So, Parent Project is for the Middle and High School, and the same program for elementary is called Loving Solutions, and it's the same curriculum, but for different age groups.
It is very targeted and very structured. And my other question is regarding the, what you've just showed. How many of our schools have the Family Project opportunities? Is it all of our schools, and how do we determine if it is not?
The Family Project?
I'm sorry. I'm losing the name of what we just talked about.
Oh, the Family Academy?
The Family Academy.
So, I think that's open to the whole division, but...Ms. Hall?
So, that's centrally based?
Yes, this is centrally based through family and school partnerships. Community relations also has a role in it, and it is division-wide, both, you know, there are virtual and hybrid opportunities as well as in-person. We're continuing to build programming for the rest of the division and pyramid by pyramid.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. St. John Cunningham?
Okay, I was really excited, and I guess I just started to cough. As you all know, this is very close to my heart, because I was a parent liaison or family liaison, as they are called now. One of the things that, first of all, kudos to all the work that's being done, and like anything, it could be multiplied, as Mr. Moon said, we could have more full-time people doing this. I think one of the most powerful messages from what one of the parents said was that she was really impressed that that family liaison was there. And even though we talk about Parent Project and family reunification, which Fairfax County created and has gone on to teach at other divisions, because the program was so incredible and really helped our families. So, there is programming from preschool all the way to high school, and I will tell you that aside from all the programming, the most critical part of our family and school partnership are those family liaisons that are there on a daily basis, that have the cultural competency, that have the language skills to connect with our parents, that have the ability to bridge, as I would always say, passing the trust between the teacher and the parent, or the counselor and the parent, or the social worker and the parent, and who are actively involved in our community. A lot of our family liaisons are not just in our schools, they are in the community, they are doing the work. And just kudos for the work that Dr. Renee LaHuffman-Jackson is doing, who was once my boss, and so kudos to the work that you're doing. And I will always advocate for the work that our family liaisons do, because they work endless hours, because they are committed to the families, and they stay with some of those families from head start to graduation. And so, I just can't say enough about the programming. I would love to have a million dollars to expand it, because that is so critical when we bring our families in and empower the parents. And when the parents see that the value that they have in their children's education, when they themselves maybe weren't educated, but they recognize that they have that power with their kids, it is just priceless. So, thank you for all the work.
Thank you. It's a great team.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Moving along, Agenda Item 8.03, Financial Year 2026 Approved Budget Update. Colin, Dr. Reed?
Thank you, Chairman Frisch, and good evening, members of the board and those listening. This evening, we're taking an opportunity to remind the school board and community about the ongoing budget work that surrounds our FY26 budget and provide some important updates as we progress towards final budget adoption on May 22nd. So, this evening, you're going to see some repeat slides and information, because as we progress towards these May deadlines, we're just wanting to, there's value in restating some of our major tenets here. And again, just reminding our community that FCPS is committed to delivering a world-class education. There are many who would say that our school division is our county's greatest asset, and to continue being this incredible asset to our county, it's important that we maintain high expectations, which require us to continue to have sustainable, high support. I do believe that a world-class education is an economic engine, and we're very proud of the work of our staff and our students and the support of our families here in the county. Just a reminder on class sizes, this is something that our county has often prided itself on, is maintaining reasonable class sizes so that all of our students have an opportunity to be known by name, strength, and need. Currently, FCPS ranks fifth out of eight school divisions in our region in terms of class size. However, when school levels are considered individually, elementary school, we rank third of eight, middle school, sixth of eight, and high school, fourth of eight. We know that it's really important to continue monitoring this data point, as again, overall, we rank in the middle of our WABE districts. Want to remind our community about our beginning teacher salaries. This is important, as we spoke earlier about the number of graduates from Commonwealth education programs. When there are more positions open than there are graduates, it's highly competitive, and so these starting salaries become more important. In FY25, we ranked fifth out of eight, and assuming we receive full funding, we would rank second in starting teacher salary. So, it's, you know, we're hopeful that we're going to have full funding and that we'll be able to see our staff be ranked at least second in starter teacher salary. Also, want to remind our community that we have the lowest ratio of central management compared to those divisions around us, and really by significant margins. In other words, as the second-largest school division in the area, I believe, is Prince William County, I think we're still well below the ratio in terms of central management. So, just really trying to be thoughtful about making sure our resources are at the school level where we know the action with our students occurs. Want to remind our community that the $4 billion operating fund budget reflects the scale as one of the largest school divisions in the country. We are the ninth largest, we run the largest school bus fleet in the nation, and by many accounts, are larger than seven states' worth of enrollment. With that overview, we continue to summarize the proposals from our county and state partners, which you see here on the slide. And I think that it's really important to note that while our budget request of the county included an additional $268.3 million, the county executive at this time has only recommended an increase of $118.6 million, which leaves a $150 million gap in the transfer at this time. I want to share again, next slide, please, Kevin. Thank you. There are two distinct budgets that we're referring to, and I think there's been a little confusion at times, so it's important that in this PowerPoint this evening, that I want to clarify that this slide, number seven, are county budget decisions that have impacted schools, which are not Fairfax County Public School budget decisions, but rather Fairfax County budget decisions. And you can see these on the slide, and I just want to clarify again, these sit within the county budget side. In looking at the state budget update, at this time, in March, the General Assembly amended the governor's budget in a way that could result in Fairfax County receiving an additional $28.3 million in funding for FY26. However, the governor followed up with recommended amendments and vetoes that would have reduced the $28.3 to $15.7 million. More recently, stay tuned, the General Assembly rejected most of the recommended budget changes, and so now have sent it back to the governor with the possibility of us recouping the additional $28.3 million, and the governor has 30 days from the General Assembly's latest action to review and take final action on the budget. Want to remind those watching about the J. Lark recommendations and the chronic underfunding, really, of schools across the Commonwealth. Again, estimating annually an underfunding of Fairfax County Public Schools of over $500 million, which is approximately $3,100 per student enrolled in Fairfax County. At this point, the local WABE divisions have released their budgets, and while we are poised to have the second-highest beginning teacher salary in the region, our standing could be at risk without sufficient funding. Really, regardless of where we end up at beginning teacher salaries, we will continue to lag behind at the midpoint and maximum salaries among the WABE divisions. In looking at the impact of the county and state budget, the funding gap could range anywhere from $120 to $150 million, based on the governor's decision to sign or not sign the current budget. And also, just wanted to put out there for the board and our community that, and you may be aware, that the Board of Supervisors have advertised a real estate tax rate increase and a potential meals tax. While the advertised real estate tax rate is included in the county executive's budget proposal, the revenue from the meals tax is actually not yet included. And so, what we did is provided some calculations to support the discussion here, and originally, when there was a meals tax proposed and envisioned several years ago, there was a discussion at that time that there would be 70% of the distribution of those meals taxes that would go to Fairfax County Public Schools. So, we calculated that half of this, because it would only be half a year, could result in an additional $45.5 million to help reduce our funding gap range. Further, I mean, if the county decided to provide 100% of the allocation of this 4% meals tax, it could increase as much as $65 million in additional funding, which would really support a narrowing of the gap in the transfer. So, this is a lot of information, but what I've been most impressed about in the last couple of days is I had an opportunity to host a roundtable discussion on this budget with some of our student journalists. So, we had an opportunity, and I really want to give Beth Fazoli a shout-out from our communications team, who said, "Why not go to our lead journalists or those folks who write for their school papers and media?". And we then had 24 of our 27 high schools represented yesterday afternoon. So, I started the meeting, and we thought we'd explain some things about the budget, but lo and behold, we did not need to, because they came prepared, and they had some tough questions, and really had, you know, I think, a lot of insight into what a high-performing, high-achieving school division is and how it's impacted them, and I think you'll be proud of that, and also their understanding that we are at a crossroads. What's helped them become the young people that they are as they transform the world around them is a legacy move they want for their younger siblings and their future children and the community they want to come back to after they've gone on to have adventures out there. These voices matter, and I think we need to make sure we remember why we're here and center our work in the voice of our young people. So, let's see how this rather large press conference went. Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Kelly. I'm from Fairfax High School. With the necessity to defund certain programs or delay new initiatives, I also read online that the middle school after-school program might be cut, but I wasn't sure if that was 100% true. What criteria does FCPS use to determine what programs are reduced or eliminated?
So, right now, in our budget, we didn't plan to reduce or eliminate any programs. We've worked on efficiencies, but your example of the middle school after-school program, the county actually funds that program, not the school division, and they've chosen to cut that. So, that wasn't a cut we would have chosen to make, and we hope they reinstated that. It's very important.
Hi, I'm Sierra, and I'm from South Lakes High School. Will any of the budget go for, to like, school security and safety, and if so, what are the things that are going to happen?
So, why is FCPS asking the county for more money this year?
What do you think the ramifications would be if FCPS were to not receive that money or that additional funding that they're requesting?
Because FCPS currently has no plans, to my understanding, of getting rid of DEI, that we'll be losing the 4% of federal funding that is in our budget. How is that going to affect everyday life for students?
There are a number of practices that, in fact, are quite supported, and our former Secretary of Education was very clear about that. And as we do continue to follow state and federal law, we still believe that equitable opportunities for our students is what really is the generator for excellence. So, we're not planning to lose those funds, and we trust that that won't come to pass.
I think teachers are one of the most important aspects of our county, and I think it's a big accomplishment for the county to agree on collective bargaining. How will the county maintain recruitment for teachers despite like the shortfall, the budget shortfall for the 7% anticipated salary increase?
I'm coming from an alternative high school that has less students than the principal high schools, and my question is, how will the proposed budget will continue to fund multi-high school and schools like it?
With the significant increase in students who are economically disadvantaged in special education programs, multilingual, how will the additional funding be allocated to meet these changing needs and priorities?
Other schools in the county are also, are nearing time for remodel or additional funding. We know that these schools are in need of upgrades or increased support.
Having a sister who's a first-year, third-grade teacher in FCPS, I was heartened to see that with this 7% increase, FCPS teachers will become first in starting salary. to see that with this 7% increase, FCPS teachers will become first in starting salary. But I am concerned to see that even with the 7% increase, which obviously is not promised, FCPS will still be fifth at midpoint salaries and seventh out of eight at maximum salaries.
Given that the $297 million increase in the budget is largely dedicated to compensation for educators and services for diverse learners, what measures, indicators, or set goals will FCPS use to measure the effectiveness of these investments in improving student outcomes and overall school?
Do you see any long-term impacts on low-income students in the foreseeable future?
Is there going to be a priority over sports versus arts programs with the budget?
You know, as you read news reports and hold your elected officials accountable, these are our tax dollars and your parents' tax dollars and soon to be your tax dollars. And we want to make sure that they're spent in a way that really shapes and lifts up future generations. Because the budget, while it's not the most glamorous topic, it drives everything we do.
So I think we've got some pretty amazing young journalists, and I'm just gonna spoiler alert, if you want to know the answers to all those questions and more, you have to check in with your local school media, so I'm not scooping them, but they were pretty amazing. So I'm gonna close out the presentation this evening just with a reminder that there are so many things that FCPS does that exceed the minimum state standards. We just jotted down some of those in alphabetical order, both on the instructional and operational side of the house, that, and just, I think, a real reminder that our community has expectations, and we traditionally have funded those and supported those. And at this point, the crossroads situation we find ourselves in is that that classroom experience is going to be impacted one way or another, depending on the degree to which we're funded. And our students also wanted me to make sure that I noted that a world-class education occurs both inside and outside of the classroom. And FCPS has always taken great pride in that. So I want to remind our community about next steps, and this is the timeline, date line. The next major milestone for the county are the public hearings that the Board of Supervisors host from April 22nd through the 24th. The budget, the county budget will be marked up on May 6th and finalized on May 13th, while the school budget will be presented on May 8th with final adoption scheduled for May 22nd. So a lot to keep track of, and we do have a website to, you know, for folks who want to stay involved, but at this time, that's the update on our budget process. Chairman Fresh.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I appreciated the Smiths t-shirt in that video. And I also want to note, since this presentation was prepared, we've added a PM work session for the committee of the whole, the Budget Committee. So we'll be doing that on the Tuesday, the 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:30, obviously open to the public and available on all the other platforms that we typically stream on. We'll get started with Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And first, thank you for this presentation, and I think it's important for our public, as we saw from the public comments tonight, and the things that I've been hearing and others have been hearing, to kind of have a bit of an update on what is the status of our budget, and really what is at risk here with our budget, too. So I appreciate you talking about, one, you know, I wanted to mention, in some of the statistics you give in the early slides, it really does show how effective and efficient we are, right? Our class sizes are not the smallest, but they're not the biggest in the county, in the area. We have the lowest ratio of central office staff to, given our surrounding jurisdictions. And, but the other thing I really wanted to point out first, well, first was that Smiths t-shirt, because that brought me back to my day, so that was pretty awesome. Whoever that student journalist was, please let him know he made an impression on us.
Yes, ma'am.
But Slide 7, you know, I just, I wish the people who are here tonight to speak about the middle school after-school program were here to see this part, because, you know, while we are all in tough budget times, and, you know, I wish the state would do more to address the chronic underfunding as shown in the J-Larke report, you know, there, this is, you know, and we're trying to work in partnership with our Board of Supervisors, you know, it is difficult to see some of these cuts that, I think, there's some confusion in the public as to where these cuts are coming from, right? And I hope that the Board of Supervisors will continue to fund the middle school after-school programming. I've heard from lots of families and students and teachers of how beneficial it's been for the students at the middle school. But I wanted to point out that these are all of the different areas that are, that impact the school system, that are not in our budget. They're, they've been traditionally in the county's budget on Slide 7. Is that a correct way of interpreting that slide?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And I think that's important to point out, that these are additional ways that the county supported the schools, but it's always been traditionally part of their budget. And so it would be difficult, having a shortfall that we have of either 121 million or 149 million, depending on what the state does, to absorb an additional $7.7 million to cover. So, you know, we're already at a crossroads. I understand everybody's budget numbers are tight right now, but it would be difficult to include, include that in our budget as well. And the only, the last thing I wanted to mention on Slide 13, when you say, these are the areas that we exceed the minimum state standards, I'm assuming what you're trying to get at is that the state only funds us for what they consider the state standards, the SOQs, right?
Correct.
In terms of staffing for schools, because the state funds us on a staffing model, right?
Correct.
And so the amount that they fund us for staffing doesn't cover all of these things. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So if we have this much of a shortfall, and the state isn't making up their share from J-Larke and from the underfunding, and we're not getting it from the county because there's a lot of competing interests and a lot of issues on the budgets on both sides, all of these things that you listed here could potentially be at risk for not continuing, or some of these things.
I think that there, the reason we noted them is there is a risk they certainly could be impacted. For example, we have more, we have more staffing in some areas than the state talks about. The advanced academic resource teachers, for example, are not in a state SOQ. But Fairfax County has determined that those roles are important for the work that occurs in our classrooms and schools. So it, you know, as you go down these lists, there are either, they are not in the state formula, or we've enhanced the state formula to provide a higher level of service delivery for our students here.
I mean, a couple of things I wanted to mention in here, the college and career specialists, which we just heard from our students, I know you mentioned that they consider how important that is, elementary art, music, and PE teachers. We know how important having a well-rounded education is in the elementary school. So I think it's important to realize that this is what the crossroads means, right? If we want to continue to be Fairfax County, this is where our crossroads is at, and we've just got to figure out how to continue all of the great things that we're doing. One last question on this, oh, I'm sorry, can I, can I have one last question? Are you aware of how much money average school systems spend above the SOQs? Like, are most school systems able to staff schools within the SOQs in Virginia? Are we unusual that we go beyond that?
No, ma'am. I, I know that schools across the Commonwealth tend to staff above the SOQs, and for, for sure, here in Fairfax County, that's left to the county, pretty much, and we're grateful for the support our county has provided over the years, because that's enabled us to go beyond the minimum. And I think, when we talk about excellence, we definitely, that requires more than the minimum, right? So our community's always been there for us, and we trust that'll continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Merron.
Dr. Reed, the questions I've gotten in the community the last few days, I'd like to ask you, please. One of them is, why can't the superintendent cut something else to keep the after-school programs?
So at this point, the after-school programs, as per Slide 7, were on the county side of the budget, and if we were being fully funded, like our full transfer, we could likely look for some spaces, but we're already in a situation where we're not being fully funded, potentially up to $150 million, which would not leave any wiggle room at all at this point, to be funding from the school budget, what traditionally has been funded from the county budget.
Well, that is, the next question I receive is, why can't FCPS tighten its belt more in terms of, you know, being more efficient? And where is data substantiating that FCPS has done so already, and there's really nothing left to cut?
So we had a chart, and I'm not sure if it's still up on the website, but if not, we'll make sure it's up tomorrow morning, but over the last 10 years, we've cut over $800 million from our budget, either in cost avoidance efficiencies or simply efficiency cuts. So we can absolutely document over $800 million in savings over the last decade.
I'm aware you've already had to inform those middle school staff who are FCPS employees funded with county funds that they will not have a job beginning July 1. Are you able to state how many jobs you've reduced, either within this budget development season or even just, say, in the last year?
So I would say that, much as the county has discussed their number of jobs that they've eliminated, many of those were vacant positions. And similarly, in our efficiency work, we have closed down vacant positions as well. And I would also say, when you think about fewer, we're right around 1% of central office support, the vast majority of our staff are at the school level. So we have not, to date, eliminated positions at the school, other than those that are enrollment-driven. But with the level of transfer dissonance, it's going to be very difficult not to look at school-based staff or programs in addition to central office-based.
About the student meeting with the journalists, did the individual journalists research the situation on their own, perhaps with, you know, information or direction from your staff? Or are FCPS students being taught now and consistently about local government and its impact in their lives?
Each of the journalists that came are writing or providing, I mean, they're acting in the role of a journalist at their school. Several have asked for follow-up interviews. We did not provide the questions, and they came ready with actually more questions than we got to in a little over an hour.
Well, I can't wait to receive a copy of that link, so I could share it. I am concerned, though, because when I've talked to a number of students recently and even in the past, whether it's AP Government, IB Course, or, you know, Gen Ed, they really don't understand what's happening locally. We, you know, they think they vote every four years. And I know, like, Oakton High School has an amazing program where they bring in candidates, and they have a model congress. What, you know, we had this whole discussion about social studies. Are we preparing the units to teach the students the, you know, litany of people who represent them and that we vote every year in Virginia?
So we didn't discuss all of that in the press conference, as you might guess, but I do know that, I think our students are beginning to form a much more cogent perspective on their experience right now. And being so close to the nation's capital, I think our students here are much more aware of political moves around them of all perspectives. So, in fact, there was a question about, why doesn't the central office more directly fund journalism at the high schools? They took a moment for a shameless plug. So we did discuss that as well, and we're still, I mean, we're at this crossroads where this board has put a stake in this, you know, stake in the ground around, if it's good for one school and one community, it needs to be for all schools and all communities. And we're still working on making sure debate is at every high school. We're making sure that every high school has a publication, and we're going to do that, even with this budget, in the situation, since we're in this, this time where we're all going to have to make sure that we keep a, just a steady focus on what's best and right for our young people.
Well, I could appreciate that the students are more aware, but as I've seen in a lot of my friends and community, there's a lot of focus on the federal, and there's so much we could do locally. And I'm not hearing that we are consistently teaching our students during the instructional day a selected time, like, which class, which grade, are they going to learn that there are nine magisterial districts in Fairfax, and they have one delegate and one senator, and the governor can't be elected back-to-back terms? Like, that granularity, because I think we're doing a huge disservice if we graduate them and they don't, they can't name their magisterial district.
So I, I hear you, and I will have some matrix of where we do that, and if we don't, we'll find an opening to do that, Ms. Merron.
Great. And I just want to thank our chair and vice chair for scheduling that April 22nd work session for the budget. The county Board of Supervisors has its public hearing that day that begins at 4:00. There is no set end time, I've confirmed that, so perhaps we can get there before our 6:30 meeting. So, thank you.
We tried to schedule it so that people could do both, at least partially. All right, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. I wanted to suggest, Slide 5 offers a comparison of leadership and management, but I think you could actually provide more information to the public, because if you look at all non-school-based positions as measured by the WABE guide, Fairfax County actually measures up quite well. I, I looked at the comparisons for Arlington, Loudoun, and Prince William County. Prince William County, it's 9.7% is non-school-based. Arlington, 8.7, Loudoun, 8.3. Fairfax County is 7.45. So I think if you provide that comparison, it shows, even when you expand beyond leadership and management positions, which is quite a small fraction of the overall workforce, we compare favorably. I wanted to ask a little bit more about the efficiencies. You mentioned, I haven't seen the slide, you mentioned about 800 million, but, but in the video, you stated that you did not propose to reduce or eliminate any programs. And so, so where did the efficiencies come from if you're not reducing or eliminating any programs?
So thank you, Mr. Dunn. And we, in the video, I said, in my budget, I didn't propose that, right? Because in the original budget, we didn't propose cuts to programs. The efficiencies are in a number of cases where we've had open positions over time. We've simply made a decision not to fill those positions. We're also looking at trades in a very direct manner at this time. We're looking at, I'll be minimizing out-of-division travel next year, we're going to be cutting that. So there are a number of efficiencies that we're working into, if you will, the business rule for this year's budget, to get where we needed to get and still have the collective bargaining agreement met with the budget we passed.
I, I appreciate that. As a former COO, I, I know that eliminating vacant positions and limiting travel conferences, sometimes professional development is usually the low-hanging fruit. But, but ultimately, is, is there any plan to conduct a comprehensive examination of our programs that we have in existence? Because I think what we've seen over the past year and a half with this new school board is, you know, there's a lot of business as usual in the way we contract and the way we do some of our business operations, and, and sometimes when we have discussed them, there, there haven't been metrics or data to, to show that the program is the most effective, or, or, you know, there are no metrics to, to say, you know, we're tracking that this is actually achieving the original objective. So is there a plan to conduct a very granular, comprehensive review, similar to what, what the county undertook on its side?
Absolutely. That is our Baldridge work, and that is the 25-page document we're going to be providing you this spring, has led us in a number of areas. Our non-traditional schools program, for example, are, we have a number of programs that we're really looking, diving into in terms of org chart, program delivery, and efficiencies, but the Baldridge work is actually capturing that at a system-wide level, and you're going to have an opportunity to take a look at sort of our first year of not just the study, but also some of the pieces that we are, how should I say, integrating more efficiently and aligning, because we know if we have better alignment, we also have more efficiency.
I, I appreciate that. My, my concern about the Baldridge is that it, it comes with, framed as the Baldridge Efficiency Award, which kind of presupposes that we're going to win some kind of award for the work we do. And I want to make sure that, as we're going through this, we, we actually focus on, how can we reduce our expenditures to be able to allocate that money towards increasing teacher pay or meeting other mission objectives? I also wanted to ask, in the Slide 13, it says we're exceeding minimum state standards with central office reductions. Can you explain what that means?
So I think that the, there are no state standards on the support side in that particular, in some of those categories. For example, cybersecurity is not something that there's an SOQ for. Mr. Sethi, is that correct? There's not an SOQ for safety and security, for office staff, translators. So there are a number of items in that support call- So there are a number of items in that support column that don't have, if you will, a ratio that's funded from the state. So, essentially, what the central office reductions, that goes to those positions that have not been filled, that we just simply said we're not going to fill, in many cases. So, I don't know if Ms. Burden wants to add on to that in terms of the central office reductions?
No, you're correct. There, there are not any SOQ staffing standards that are associated with central office. We do receive some funds for leadership, a very small amount of funds, if you know how they do the salaries, when they calculate that. But in general, the support staff, they're, the SOQs are either silent or very vague, where they say that you must have enough safety and security people. It's just, there's no formulas attached to those items.
And no funds, right? Or minimal funds?
Minimal funds.
And, and finally, I just wanted to mention, I, I know that we're always talking about salaries, but Fairfax County has certain benefits that many counties in our WABE Guide don't. For example, not everyone offers dental and vision, which is very important, but not everyone provides. And we also are alone in having the ERFC, which, you know, the supplemental pension. So I think that is a distinguishing factor and should be included in our budget presentation. Because, you know, that, those things matter for, for, for staff when they're making decisions about which employer. It's not just based on money, it's based on the whole package of salary and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I, I do want just to reiterate that last point that Mr. Dunn made. That's always a point that we've discussed before and has been discussed even with the last board ad nauseam. How do we include that as an attractive feature to not just retain the folks that we have, but to also attract new individuals? Because we tend to not have it be part of the conversation. And I definitely understand the challenge, because it's not necessarily part of the salary package. It's not compensation, but it is a benefit which is very unique. So I would love to hear, how can we better feature that for our own recruitment work? And I know it's told at the job fairs, but in these discussions, in these slides.
So, two topics. I think Mr. Dunn mentioned vision and dental insurance.
Oh, I just wanted to talk about ERFC.
Okay, I was going to say.
No, just ERFC.
Okay, because staff still have to pay the deductibles, right, for, or pay for the insurance benefits. The ERFC is something I know we've discussed for a number of years. And I'm going to ask, well, I know that our HR department has worked to try to illuminate that benefit to a higher degree. I will say, it depends on the experience level of the candidates coming in in terms of their appreciation of that value. Ms. Burden, do you want to clarify anything about the ERFC benefit? I know Dr. Anderson said that it's, you know, it's sort of separate from salary, but it is a benefit. And then, Mr. Solomon, if you could follow with what we're doing to amplify and eliminate that benefit?
Yeah, I believe that ERFC, the Local Retirement Plan, is the only distinction between us and surrounding school divisions. I'm checking WABE right now, and it looks like everybody carries dental and vision. The ERFC, it is, is my understanding that young teachers, straight out of college, that salary is the, is the item that is most important to them. We certainly mention in our recruiting, and Mr. Solomon can go in more detail about that, about ERFC. Because, you know, some of their parents may be informing them that retirement is really important, even if you're only 22 years old. But in general, it's really more of a retention than it is a recruitment strategy. And so, that's why the salary increase that we've proposed is, is so important. But it does distinguish us from the surrounding divisions in the Commonwealth by having that, that local retirement plan. And that's very attractive to all of our employees, once they've been here a few years and start thinking about, you know, the future.
And I would just say that Ms. Burden is exactly correct. And of course, we take a multi-pronged approach to recruitment and retention. About that benefit specifically, of course, we share it at our job fairs. We actually partner very closely with ERFC and have them attend our job fairs. We share the information when we visit colleges, universities, and professional organizations. And of course, we partner very closely with ERFC to share the information with our current employees through newsletters and other platforms.
And I can also share that during those job fairs, we have some employees who are of an age where they will soon benefit from ERFC. And that has been a retention tool for some of those employees who might be coming later in their career and want to take advantage of moving to Fairfax to get ERFC as well as their VRS from another jurisdiction.
Thank you, I appreciate all of your responses. I also would like to think, how can we, again, include it in all of our conversations? Because the more we speak about our beginning scales, whether it be bachelor's, master's, a lot of people are hearing that information. And so, it's just like, one more thing that is working in our favor that I'd like for us to elevate a little bit more frequently. I did want to speak about the middle school after-school programs, and I'll speak this, about this a little bit more during my skip report. But particularly because so much of the discussions that have occurred with the Board of Supervisors have centered around a sliding scale for the after-school program. And I, I've been adamant, as one board member, I do not find that to be a reasonable, a reasonable course of action because of the percentage of our students who participate, who are essentially students who are economically disadvantaged. So, can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I, Dr. Mark Emery is in charge of our middle school after-school activities and has been for a long time. His assessment is that approximately 70% of the middle schoolers who participate in middle school after-school activities would qualify for free or reduced lunch. And, I mean, that's 70% of the young people participating in the program. And so, I, I think that the, it appears, based on that data, that it would be very difficult to recoup the costs of the program based on a fee structure. So, I, I think that it's imperative that we think about how we are able to fund that program. Because so many of the young people who participate, their families would not be able to fund.
Absolutely. And Mr. Smith also shared this quite eloquently. This board and previous boards have really worked hard to remove barriers from student participating and having access to various things. This will just reverse course. And so, I, I appreciate that. And last thing I will say on this matter, it seems to be, and this is a very technical term that I'm going to use, the juice is not worth the squeeze on this one. It's $4 million. There has to be a better way to, to have some savings on the county side without taking away a program, which has been so successful in fulfilling its core mission, which is to reduce gang activity, which is to ensure that students have something productive to do after they are dismissed from schools. One question that I do have is, obviously, dollars are limited everywhere. So we want to make sure that we are turning over every stone. I would love to hear the conversations that we are having, or could be having, with our partners on the Board of Supervisors in terms of how to have efficiencies in areas in which we have, like, work. It's not going to be teachers, it's not going to be firefighters. Is it printing? Is it HR? Is it technology? What space do we have to maximize economy of scale between these two entities that serve essentially the same constituency?
Yes, ma'am. I, it's my understanding that the Board of Supervisors has proposed, and we've agreed to some joint committees, board to board, on key topics. I believe facilities are one, perhaps technology another. But I think that is a great first step to begin to think about how, because you're right. I mean, all of us who live in the county are taxpayers, and we want our tax dollars to be well-used and to support the work and those things that make this county amazing. So, I think that those joint committees will be a, a good first start. And I believe it's been capital, facilities, and perhaps technology are, where they're starting on that.
Thank you. And I could see another space with cybersecurity. One of the things we talked about with our federal partners is how much we invest in that. And it's difficult, and it's challenging. And this is a good space where we can get some support from our local organization. One of the things you talked about in the student interviews, and I was very glad to hear that, that we are not going to divert away from our work on DEI. It is core to the mission of Fairfax County. And I, I cannot overstate this, because there's been a lot of concern in the community, are we going to abandon our core mission, given that so many schools are doing such? Whether it be higher education institutions, or even other school divisions in the state, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I was very glad to hear that response. But along with that, can you, just to paint the clear, comprehensive picture, in terms of what is at stake if things were to proceed in a manner that is not, that is not beneficial to us? What I mean is, what grants could be potentially at stake, and what is that total number? I know we've discussed this here before, so I'm not sure if you've sent that to us in a Friday letter. I don't believe I've seen it.
Yes, ma'am. So, the, the question the student journalists asked, which I think is a question that many divisions, you know, around the country and states honestly are addressing, is the most recent Department of Education request around commitment to not engaging in certain diversity, equity, inclusion practices, but also making sure we're committed to following the Constitution and state and federal statute. And our, our, our equity work here in Fairfax County clearly is in alignment with state and federal statutes. And therefore, we, I believe that our funds are secure and that we continue to work with a clear understanding of the importance of that work and our resolute commitment to that work. And we believe it's legal work. In fact, it's morally the work we have to be doing. It's mission-driven work. Having said that, our federal grant dollars are about 168 million in basically three large buckets, if you will. Our food and nutrition dollars are about 68 million. And our Title I dollars are about 50 million. And our IDEA dollars are about 50 million. And so, those would be the three areas that would be at risk if, for some reason, there was a disruption in our federal dollar allocation.
That was my time, but I do have a follow-up, because I don't think that was the answer I was looking for.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Anderson.
I just wanted to reiterate something that we had talked about earlier this week when we had our check-in. I do wonder whether or not some of the numbers that we have related to middle school after-school program usage is actually maybe misleading because of a certain number of factors. So what I would love us to do is, because at a town hall that I was at with Chairman McKay, he leaned over and he said, "We've got to get these numbers up if we're going to keep doing this." And so, I'm kind of wondering whether or not we are not representing the actual use. We, we come to Luther Jackson and we see the robust after-school. And so, it's hard to think that we don't have good usage across the county. So I, I, I have lots of questions about where our usage is happening. I also am wondering whether or not our usage has picked up with the return to the office order for the federal government workers? And so, whether or not we have more usage? So I would love for the opportunity to maybe revisit some of those numbers to, to ensure that we're giving the Board of Supervisors the most accurate numbers possible.
Yes, ma'am. I know Dr. Emery's working on that and did present some numbers at the recent skip meeting. And I will check in and make sure we have current numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Anderson, for your one question.
Thank you. What I was getting at, outside of those three funding sources that you've, that you talked about, are any other potential federal allocations which might be in jeopardy?
Yes.
That's the listing that I was looking for. For example, one of the things we discussed very early on was the, I guess, the loss of the grant for the EV buses. What other like things that are out there that may not be part of our recurring expenditures, but will essentially impact our operations?
So we, we receive a number of different grants from, through federal funds. The EPA grant was not necessarily a Department of Education grant, but definitely federal funding. And you're correct, we did need to cancel that order because we didn't have a commitment to fund it. And without that, we're not going to follow through. Ms. Burden, can you enumerate maybe several of, or?
And it doesn't have to be today, but I would love to see a written list of that. And could that be possible? Can that be provided?
Yes, ma'am. We, we can provide it tomorrow.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'd like to get a clear picture. And just the last thing, I, I just kind of wanted to reiterate what was shared by several members regarding Slide 13. You know, the needs-based staffing is one of the most important things that we do at our schools. And it, it's a necessary activity. It, it's not a nice-to-have. It's really a need-to-have, as it's articulated. But one last other question, which is asking you to kind of project a little bit. In looking at Prince William, some of the data shows that they have some of the highest teacher, teacher salaries. And yet, some other slides that you've shown us also show that they have the lowest per pupil allocation. How is that achieved?
So, I would say a couple things. Their county fully funds their budget, just as Loudoun County, I believe, recently fully funded their budget. And class sizes are different, is my understanding, is one of the key differences in Prince William County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Maron, just under the gun.
Dr. E, can you share, you know, we, we ask you to share our best practices and examples. Can you share what another example is of how a school division works with their local funder to budget? Like, in your previous school division, was it this kind of bifurcated system? Or are you aware of other school divisions that do something differently in Virginia that we could try to really collaborate authentically with the Board of Supervisors?
That's a great question, Ms. Maron. I, my experience coming from a state where I've previously been superintendent, we had, our school division had our, we had taxing authority, subject to voter approval. But we didn't have a local entity such as a Board of Supervisor group. We dealt with the state and the federal government, just as we do here. But there wasn't a local funder, because we retained that taxing authority. In terms of Virginia and best practices, Ms. Burden, can you think of other divisions that, in Virginia, or other practices that come to mind?
Well, a couple of divisions are still operating revenue-sharing agreements. But those have kind of gone out of fashion. They were popular 10, 15 years ago, where they have, get a set amount of funding from the local, I mean, from the local governing body every year. But, you know, that really just shifts the conversation to the projections instead of the budget. Because if you're, if they, you know, county governments typically are going to be ultra-conservative on their revenue projections, which is not really good for people who are trying to plan. But if I was on the county side, I would be ultra-conservative too. So, if they regularly are ultra-conservative, then even if it is a certain percentage, then, you know, you're going to end up with a lot of money on the back end, which is not really an efficient way to run your budget. So they have, you know, others, you know, critics say that revenue-sharing agreements silence the voice of the people. Because if the amount of funding that you're going to get is always known, then, you know, why, why would anyone bother to comment about it? And then the third item is, is that it would be, it's very difficult for a superintendent to meet their code-required thing to provide a needs-based budget based on what's needed in the school system of the upcoming year, if they are falsely pushing that number down based on a revenue-sharing agreement. So, it's probably not legally enforceable, but revenue-sharing agreements are probably politically enforceable.
Thank you, that's really interesting. I think too, as the board prepares for its Masics Worth session about capital planning, you know, these are these huge investments that we need to know more about. And like, I'm really glad that our board is looking to learn more about other ways to fund construction in a more effective, efficient way, especially as the costs of things keep escalating. So, again, these community resources, I just am so hungry for us to work in. So again, these community resources, I just am so hungry for us to work in partnership for One Fairfax. So perhaps in the remaining weeks, we can make that happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. Moon.
Ms. Burden, those school districts where they, there isn't revenue-sharing arrangement between governing body, local governing body and school board, those local governing bodies still take very conservative approach for the revenue projections. I think our own governing body seems to be taking that approach even without the revenue-sharing arrangement. Isn't that correct?
I don't know. I'd have to look at their year-end and see how their revenue projections compare to what they actually receive.
Okay. I mean, listening to your response to the revenue-sharing arrangement question, that reminded me of one particular school district which has revenue-sharing arrangement, but they share, they share additional revenue.
Yes, that is usually a component of a revenue-sharing agreement, and that is on the back end, that there's a true-up to the actual revenue instead of what is projected. But again, that's not great for planning, because you get it on the back end, so you can't, you can't really use it. It's like one-time money.
I think they seem to be using the additional revenue at the end, back end, for one-time purposes.
Right.
Maintenance or purchase, et cetera. With that said, I am still hopeful that, that county, our local governing body, County Board of Supervisors, will see, truly see our needs and then fund beyond what the county executive has proposed. That said, that said, if we have to make any adjustments to our budget, I was looking at these numbers charged, et cetera, in our budget book, with the assumption that we're not going to touch what we agreed to provide to our employees through CBA, then we have to go to what's considered, what's, I think, under already as logistics. Budget set aside for the logistics, which is about $400 million. And then I was looking at different categories of those, where those $400, $400 million is coming from. I think those area, that is the only area that's coming, you know, we can, we can have any adjustments that can come from. But looking at each one of them, it will be very difficult. Are you going to cut textbooks? Are you going to cut supplies to schools? We cannot cut insurance. Are you going to cut middle school after, you know, activity buses? Are we not going to purchase buses? I mean, but we may end up looking at the logistics area, just for my colleagues' benefit and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right, moving on. Agenda Item 9, Consent Agenda. Our adopted Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda is displayed on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing no objection, this consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item 10, New Business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. Agenda Item 11, Board Committee Reports. I call on Dr. Anderson for a skipped report.
Yes, giving the hour, I'll be a little bit more brief, but I do want to inform the board of the last skipped meeting that we had on April 2nd. Both Dr. Ponce, I'm sorry, Dr. Ponce, Dr. King, and Dr. Presidio, and there's probably one more person who were in attendance, who had been in attendance. One of the crucial pieces that I wanted to share was the strategic early childhood plan that the county has come together that really has four components. Component one is to improve child health and well-being. Two, increase access to early learning. Three, elevate the early childhood workforce. And four, transform the early childhood system. And what really came to mind during this meeting is that we are really working with two different definitions, because we've had some interesting discussions where the minds weren't really meeting from schools and county. And I think Dr. Presidio did an outstanding job in really elevating what is our, what our definition is of preschool versus their definition of early learning. It's the piece that is much more academic and much more rigorous that is missing. So one of the things the committee needed to do was to approve this document, and we had quite a robust discussion and were adamant that we needed to have a piece in this plan that spoke to the preschool education component. Other than that, it doesn't advance our work in any way. And so I think Dr. Presidio, again, you get the kudos on this. Not only were we able to initially infuse it, that was the ask under Goal 2, but doing better than that, it's going to now be its own standalone goal. Without that being a target, we are not going to move the needle in having the skip committee help us to increase seats in early childhood, in, yeah, in preschool. It's going to be more of what is offered, which is really not consistent with what FCPS requires. So once we have the final plan, I do intend on sharing it with you. I didn't share this one because of, it's still going to be revised, but I really wanted to make sure we were clear on their understanding of what the early childhood experiences were and how it doesn't. It has not yet aligned with what our vision is for preschool education.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Agenda Item 12, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Frisch. Just again, congratulations to our National Board Certified Teachers. And also, it is National Assistant Principals Week, so right before spring break, I know they're busy. Just want to say a big shout-out to the transportation team. The rodeo was incredible. They can back buses up in tighter spaces than I can back my car up into, so I was very impressed. Then also want to share that I enjoyed attending the La Liga soccer game at West Potomac High School, student-run game, and there was some fabulous soccer going on. Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and I shared their reports in my last weekly reflection. It was a lot of excitement. Want to share that the Edison High School production of Grease was amazing. I was just incredibly impressed, as well as their Academy Auto Collision Class, which finished the car they used in Grease, which was a really nice partnership. Also saw a play I'd never heard of before, so I might be living under a rock, but Justice High School did Almost Maine, and I hadn't heard of the play, so I Googled it and found out it was the most performed high school play in the last decade, which I didn't know, but it was, it was really a wonderful show. Also joined several of you at the 50th Annual All-County Sixth Grade Chorus, a dance move at Bailey's Upper, the Pyramid Art Show at Westfield, a steam night at Hunt Valley Elementary, amazing things happening. And what I loved especially were our West Springfield High School students that came, and our TJ students, to help our students at Hunt Valley. So just really lots of track and field at Woodson High School. We have our young women pole vaulting over 10, or over 10 feet, which is unbelievable. I was kind of thinking maybe I should try it, but I restrained myself. And then the lacrosse tournament at Fairfax High School in Robinson. So just lots of exciting things, all of which are funded by our county in addition to the minimums from the state, and just really trust that our community, you know, understands the importance of those activities. So thank you, Chairman Frisch.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda Item 13, Board Matters. I will call on each board member to share their comments. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. So having a little trouble with my video. Oh, there we go. So I'd like to congratulate the nationally board-certified honorees from Mount Vernon District. Heather Young from Holland Meadows, Julian Braden from Laurel Hill, and Rachel Morris from Laurel Hill. I'd like to say congratulations to South County High School student Julia Seitz for being selected as a grand prize nominee in Physics and Astronomy at this year's Fairfax County Science Fair for her project, "The Impact of Municipal Dimming on Sky Glow." I'd also like to say congratulations to Whitman Middle School's Special Education Department Chair, Angela Perez, who was selected to receive a First Class Award for Demonstrating Excellence in Educating Students with Disabilities. In late March, I had the pleasure to conduct presentations for the Stratford Landing PTA, the Washington Mill PTA, and the Crosspoint Homeowners Association. Thank you to these organizations for inviting me. These events provided valuable opportunities to share information and address the questions and concerns of families in my district. And if you haven't heard, very exciting news, a Montessori program, the first public Montessori program in Fairfax County, is coming to the West Potomac Pyramid at Bucknell Elementary. It will begin next year, the 2025-26 school year. It'll start with multi-age classrooms at the pre-K and kindergarten levels. Families of current three, four, and five-year-olds are invited to apply through a lottery process. The program is free and transportation will be provided. The application is available online now through May 1st, 2025, at fcpse.edu/montessori. Please check it out, and please make sure to enroll your child to participate if you're interested. I hope everyone has a safe and restful spring break, especially all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson.
I do want to say happy Assistant Principal Week. Is it week or month? Dr. Reed, is it a week or month?
It is only a week.
Oh, it needs to be a month. That is one of the most challenging jobs in a school, because you're doing discipline all day, and you don't really get the joys often of the academic work. So, woo, better y'all than me, but congratulations on that. Just one thing I wanted to share, last week, I had the opportunity to go to Falls Church High School to attend the Amy Baker Memorial Bench Dedication, which brought back so many, so many Jaguars who graduated, they were Class of 1989. While they came for a somber moment, it was wonderful just to watch them walk around the school and to see the new school that they, you know, that they, that they attended how many years ago? Again, it was just fantastic. So I appreciate the individuals from the community, one of their classmates who got that together, as well as Dr. Noack's support to ensure that he could be supportive of this community, because they made a beautiful moment out of a very sad event.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Marin. Ms. Dixitt.
I'm just going to say have a great spring break. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Ms. Marin.
Yes, I also just want to wish everyone a happy Easter, happy Passover, happy spring break.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. St. John Cunningham.
Okay, I'm going to try to go fast to cover some of the things I didn't cover at our last meeting because I couldn't talk. I was happy to attend the CARES of the Quarter presentation to Twain Middle School's Ms. Vivian Beck, and she received this quarter's CARES Award for showing special care for those who have not yet experienced success. Region 3 awards for Outstanding Operational Employee, Janelle Lewis at Bucknell Elementary School. Outstanding Leader, Mary Beth Starkey at Edison High School. Region 6 awards, Outstanding New Secondary Teacher, Sheridan Lusk, who happens to be a Hayfield graduate and the daughter of Fran Conia Supervisor Rodney Lusk. Outstanding New Elementary Teacher, Mackenzie Fagan at Springfield Estates Elementary School. Also, Edison's Chef Walden and Culinary Students invited me and community members to judge a chop competition, and though I was unable to attend due to the flu, it was a wonderful experience for my staff aide, Mara Kaiser-Brocker, who filled in for me. This past Saturday, I started my day at the Hayfield Craft Fair and ran into Sheila Holmes, Instructional Assistant from Mount Vernon Woods, Sally Boyle-Schelberg, retired Rosehill Preschool Teacher, and Christine Bar, former Bucknell Teacher, all displaying their crafts. I ended the day at the Edison Theater Company production of Grease, which was wonderful. This past Tuesday, I was honored to attend the School Board Leadership Program Mock Forum, where my student representative Natalia Langdon from Hayfield Secondary presented her topic, "Expanding Crew to All High Schools Throughout FCPS." I'd like to congratulate John, Micah, a math teacher at Hayfield Secondary School, who has been named a Virginia finalist for the 2025 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And congratulations to Dosenka Ulo, Integrated Engineer Teacher in Edison's Global STEM Challenges Program for being recognized by the Air Force for STEM Excellence. I do hope you all enjoy your spring break, happy Passover, happy Easter. While you're out, please go online and look at all the spring musicals. You can see when you come back. Also, save the date for the community conversations with Superintendent Dr. Reed on Monday, April 21st, at Mount Eagle Elementary School, from 6:30 to 7:30. I'll be joining her that night. And just all of you have a great break.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you probably know that, last week, I was able to spend three days, 34 days, in Atlanta, Georgia, attending the National School Board Association's conference. I just wanted to see, I know, the rest of the colleagues, you know, went to different conferences, but I wanted to see how the NSADA conference has become. Realized that compared to pre-pandemic years, the crowd size has probably diminished quite a bit, and there were fewer choices of the sessions that I could take. However, at the same time, I was able to get really a lot out of conference, you know, including how we can better provide a programs for the multilingual learners and language and culture immersion programs as well. And also, as we focus more on our, you know, advanced courses for our students, that, you know, how we can make the successful. And in the age of AI, about how to deal with deep fakes and disinformation. But most of all, a lot of people, a lot of people had concerns about the challenges posed by federal directives. In one session, you know, I attended, it was closed door, we closed the door, so that we can have an honest conversation. Nvidia was not welcome to that room. We had pretty lively, very serious conversation. That's something I would like to share with my colleagues of record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Vice Chair Anderson.
I hope everybody has an amazing spring break.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Couple quick things. I also enjoyed attending the 50th Annual Sixth Grade All-County Choral Festival, weekend before last. It was really great to see so many talented kids singing their hearts out and playing a variety of instruments as well. It's not lost on me, my partner told me he was there for the, about 30 years ago, as a sixth-grade student in the All-County Choral Festival. So it's still churning out very talented students, and very much appreciated being able to join folks there and open with a joke, which I will now share with my colleagues who were not there. Why are pirates such good singers? Because they can hit the high sea. Oh, isn't that a good one? I also had an opportunity to join several of my colleagues at the opening of the Nova Prism Center, which is the only LGBTQ center for youth in Fairfax County and perhaps even Northern Virginia, but definitely Fairfax County. So we're grateful to have them in McLean. You should look them up, so you can see their services. Looking forward to the Falls Church Pyramid Art Show next Wednesday, or the Wednesday after next, at Falls Church High School. And want to remind constituents that Senator Mark Warner is having his annual Academy Day coming up on Saturday, April 26th, at the University of Mary Washington. You can find information on his website. And Congressman Jerry Connolly is hosting his annual congressional art competition, which you can find more information about on his website as well, with a timeline. I believe the nominations have to be in by May 5th. So with that, I appreciate everybody's hard work tonight in getting us through this meeting. At 11:22 PM, we are adjourned.